Okay, welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And I will have a call it to order and have a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
Tonight we'll have our pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Aguilera and our invocation will be Kay Silverman, a member of North Coast Church.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, we praise you and thank you for all of your blessings to each one of us and to our families. And we thank you for the privilege and honor to call ourselves your children. We thank you, oh God, for the gift of living in a free country where we still have the freedom to worship you. Help us stand up for what is right and honorable and always live with integrity. Please help us to remember our brothers and sisters who have given their lives to keep us free through their service to our country. Let us never forget the price of freedom to live here in the United States of America. Lord, we thank you for our Vistifier Department and our San Diego County Sheriff's Department who willingly give of themselves every day to lead, serve, and protect the citizens of Vista. We are forever grateful to each one of them and ask your protection over them and their families, always. Oh God, we thank you for being here in our own City Hall of Vista. We ask that you be with our city council and staff and be their guide and counselor as they continue to seek and to serve and to lead our city with integrity. We pray for ourselves and for each other that we stand up for you, oh God. We pray for courage, commitment, and resolve to offer our time, resources, and our leadership to answer your call to serve our community. We thank you for all these blessings and privileges that we have in you. Please continue to strengthen us all to use our time, talents, and leadership which you have given us for the betterment of our beloved city of Vista. In your name we ask this prayer.
Thank you, Kay, for doing that, for the good words. Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So the next thing we'll have is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
And there were actually no closed sessions. There wasn't one scheduled today. And so we'll go from that to our presentation of our Adopt a Block volunteer recognition. And tonight we'd like to recognize the members of the Vista Clean Environment Adopt a Block Group. These volunteers have provided over 645 hours of community service in the past 12 months. When your name is read, please come down and receive your certificate of appreciation. I will be down there giving certificates. And they are all down there. Okay. I think the councils will enjoy me down there if they will. Hello? Ah, there we are. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'll call people up here. And do you want, how we want to do this? Maybe, yes, would you like to do certificates? And then, I think I have the names here if you have the certificates. Okay. So, we're gonna start with Maria Saron de Velasco. Is she here? We have Jessica M. Velasco Saron. Do you want to stay here and do pictures? Okay, Brian Velasco. Christopher Velasco. And Adolfo Velasco. Got the whole family. Got their whole family here. So should we do the family and then go on to the next family, maybe? Should we do it that way? Is that a better way to do it? Yeah, that'd be better because then there won't be so many. Okay, let's do that. No? You're gonna do all of them? Oh, okay. We're gonna do them all. Okay. So then we'll start with Mario Solomon. David Solomon. Alexandra Solomon. Gabriela Solomon. The other family. Okay, and then we're gonna start with Martha Leon. Is Martha here? Jocelyn Ortiz. Not here, maybe? Okay. Jacqueline Ortiz. Not here either. Okay. Sylvia Gallardo Mendez. Arlie Mendez. Yasmin Morellos Lopez. Is she here? Clementina Lopez. How about Marcelino Guzman? Nope. Alexis Guzman? Yasmin Calores? And Ulysses Calores? Alma Gonzalez? Jose Aquino Lewis? Israel Aquino Lewis? Alma Garrido? Alma, is Alma here? David Nieto? Carlos Zaragoza? And Mara Cruz? Is Mara here? That is, give it all a hand. We'd also like to acknowledge Maria Saron de Velasco and her family for coordinating this group for the past five years. Congratulations. We really appreciate all the time and effort you've put in and keep, to help keep Vista beautiful. Thank all of you for that. You keep our city beautiful. We appreciate you very much for that. We have city water bottles and passes to the Wave Water Park and tickets for the Moonlight Amphitheater for you and your family. And I think they're right, I'm gonna say they're right in here. So all of you, so congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Want to do a picture? Rest come up there. I'm gonna give this, I'll give this to you and you can distribute all of this.
Thank you.
And then do... So we get all the pictures. Would it be better to have them all come out here? Let's go over here. Come here. So you got an ID sticker here.
Could I, could I hear you? I don't know. No, I didn't.
Yeah, we're okay.
It's okay.
Yes. Hold on. One sec. One, two, okay. One, two, thirty. One, two. She dies.
City, no, it's...
Cox Campbell.
Cox Campbell, yeah. And also, what's this paper, the online paper? Vista Press Online. Oh, why can't I think of that? Vista Press Online and then their pictures will be on there. So, the next thing on our agenda here is our consent calendar. And the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the consent calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the rest of the calendar. So, do I have anything here? No. Is there anything removed from the consent calendar? If not, I would entertain a motion. Councilwoman Campbell.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have the motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion casts, passes unanimously. Deputy Mayor Rigby, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could ask the city clerk to record my abstention on C9, please.
What is C9? What would that be?
That would be the Central Vista Business Improvement District Administration.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then the next thing on our agenda, we'll go into our discussion items. And the first one is, discussion item is D1, our Paseo Santa Fe Gateway Arch. And John Meyer, who is our redevelopment and housing director, is going to introduce
Good evening, mayors and members of the city council. I'm John Meyer. I'm the Housing and Redevelopment Director. This item was last discussed at the city council meeting of April 26, 2016. At that time, staff had presented two alternatives. Those are what you see on the screen on the left side. And the direction that was provided to staff included adding Vista as an internally illuminated sign under Paseo Santa Fe, leave the hummingbird image as is, and either paint the hummingbird flower or modify the shape of the flower. What we've brought back this evening...
There you go.
Thank you. So we've worked with the contractor and the sign fabricator. And what we've brought back for your consideration tonight is the word Vista without the California under the Paseo Santa Fe. In talking with the contractor and the sign fabricator, it was determined that regarding the flower and the hummingbird, we would be best served to maintain it as a silhouette. I think one of the artists at the last meeting mentioned that in the daytime you'll see the colors, but in the evening when it's internally illuminated, you wouldn't see that. So we looked at three options. Am I doing this?
Well, it's, welcome to our city council meeting. See if we can get that working.
Just go ahead and move it for me. So, the three options that we're presenting tonight is to use a generic flower, foregoing the context of the city's official flower, eliminate the flower, leaving only the Anna's hummingbird, or simply leaving the silhouette of the hummingbird and the flower unchanged. We have, this demonstrates that the lilac is a difficult flower to see in silhouette, but that is how we arrived at what's on the sign today. And then we've included, I think, six different flowers and silhouettes to give you an idea what, how that would look. And that concludes staff's presentation. We can scroll through the different silhouettes if the council would like that.
Okay, and I have, actually I have three speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers? Okay. We will start with Tom Fleming. You have three minutes. If you'll state your name and address, that would be great.
Okay, Tom Fleming, 809 Grapevine in Vista, California.
Thank you.
And it won't take three minutes. I just basically wanted to say that the, all the discussion that I've heard so far about the changing of the sign, one of the things that came to my mind is if it is changed to read Vista there, what that actually would be doing is putting a central marker for the three districts that we are dealing with in downtown Vista, with the historic area, the historic area, you got the village, and you have the Paseo Santa Fe. Paseo Santa Fe is also marked pretty clearly on those roundabouts. There are signs on there that say Paseo Santa Fe. So, I would, I like the suggestions that you're making that works. It's not something that I'm, you know, I'm going crazy about here, but just, I just wanted to have my voice heard on that, that I would, wouldn't object to having the whole Paseo Santa Fe turned into Vista in that part. So, that's all I had today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next speaker is Teresa Collins.
Good evening, city council and Vista residents. My name is Terry Collins. I was here last time on 4/26. And I'm a member of the Change the Paseo Santa Fe Sign Group. We have received now over 3,200 signatures on two petitions. One to change the Paseo Santa Fe sign like you've agreed. The other to ask you to please engage the public in the decision, in the final decision of the new design. And the third to stop from any other archway being put up in the Paseo district. At the 4/26 meeting, it seemed like the city council didn't quite understand while we were here. It's not the beautiful name, Paseo. It's not the beautiful district. It's the fact that you forgot to represent the entire city of Vista. I want to start off by reminding you what city council member Franklin said in his closing remarks. And you were our hero that night, I want you to know. City council member Franklin said, "Perhaps we want to publish what we think is our final choice and give it some time to ruminate." For 60 days, let 60 days go by, perhaps the opportunity for everybody in the community to share the new drawing and for people who have left, who have the gift of social media to share it. And if there is going to be opposition to the new design, certainly we want to know about it. Then council member Aguilera added that local artist, Sarah Spinks, could maybe participate in the redesign. I thought that was great. But at the end of the meeting, the city manager did not include the council members' requests in the directive he presented to the council for approval. His directive only said that we, that they would bring back several options, adding Vista to the bottom, modifying the flower, or painting the flower and the bird. Again, the city council and city manager have excluded the public from the design process. The following day, the city's director of redevelopment, John, confirmed this to be true in a conversation he had with Catherine Kerner, also part of our group. Since council member Franklin's request for community input was ignored, I now am respectfully requesting that the city council does not make a decision today based on the design The word Vista up in that sign is only 10 inches tall. This is 10 inches. This is what you would be seeing when you drive by. I've spoken to John Meyer's counterpart at another city in California, and he gave me the following ideas that they use to engage the public. Open up the design for a logo competition. Encourage all forms of input. Engage with local high schools and community colleges to have art students submit their designs. Hold public workshops on a Saturday and at night so working folks can attend. And then post the final redesigns on the survey for public...
Excuse me. Teresa, your time is up.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Thank you very much.
Catherine Kerner? You have three minutes. You state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Kerner, 1017 Valley Crest Drive, 47-year resident of Vista. Thank you for allowing me to speak again on the redesign of the Paseo Santa Fe Art. At the city council meeting on April 26th, I was happy that yourself, Mayor Ritter, and the council members agreed, albeit slightly grudgingly, that the signs should be changed. What I was surprised by was the way that you decided the redesign should be approached. First, that all of you sat up there and talked about what you thought it should look like and what you would like to see. Excuse me. And the last, I checked, none of you are artists or sign makers. I think that's correct to assume. When Sarah Spinks, who was an actual artist, came up and presented her opinion that painting the flower would simply not work, it seemed like you really did just completely ignore that and you did give a directive to Mr. Mayor and Mr. Johnson, excuse me again, to look into painting the flower. When I spoke to Mr. Mayor the day after the meeting, I was surprised to find that no additional input would be heard or considered. He told me that he could not do anything that the council did not direct him to do. He went on to tell me that local government was not a popularity contest. I reminded him that it is, however, the responsibility of local government to deliver the will of the people. With the overwhelmingly negative response to the sign, I would have thought that the powers that be would have learned from the past and actually considered the input of the people of Vista. We now know there was never any public input on the name of this sign or the design of this sign. The public records request I made to the city regarding the amount of public input that was considered when designing the sign showed that the full extent was Mr. Mayor showing it at a public arts commission in 2014, sending out a rendition of the sign in 2015 through our City of Vista newsletter, and it being shown at the city's outreach booth. Did anyone think perhaps it could have been put onto the Facebook page or the city's website? I'm respectfully asking Mayor Ritter and the members of the city council to sew together our three distinct districts by changing the Paseo Santa Fe sign to represent Vista in all of its glory. Pardon me. And I would like to echo the sentiment of my friend Teresa in thanking you, Mr. Franklin, for coming to really speak out for the people of Vista and by acknowledging that this is a public process. It should be a public process when we have this kind of an erection in our city. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of our speakers, actually. And so I would see what the council has to say. Councilmember Franklin.
So, I thought that, and I guess we didn't have a clear sense of the council on the idea of creating a venue for public input, but I still feel that we haven't achieved the goal of soliciting input in a way that makes a large number of citizens feel like they have a say. And I'm certainly interested in a process where, because as I mentioned in our last discussion about this item, I have had numerous citizens who aren't necessarily, you know, they didn't come to the meeting tonight or the last meeting, they may not know any of the people who have been organizers, but they're citizens, residents of the city. And I have heard this discussion from numerous different groups. I sat in a restaurant and listened to people who didn't know who I was have a conversation about it at the table next to me. And there was overwhelming sentiment in a group of eight people that something different should be done. So I don't think it's just that the voices of the few people who have come to speak to us. I think there are more people. And one of the things that's been pointed out is we don't know how many of the 3,000 people that signed the petition reside in the city of Vista. And that's something that we would fairly like to have known because, you know, my concern always is to put the opinions and ideas of the citizens of Vista first. However, I do like the idea, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to offer a specific design because I think some thought needs to be given to the design of the public input process. But I had rather hoped that, and I guess what I would like to ask is, could we ask staff to devise a process by which we could accept public input, select a design with public input, and then publish the runner, you know, the, publish the intended choice and allow for public comment? That way, whatever decision we make here, this is gonna hopefully stand for 100-plus years. And we want to leave it with the lasting memory that it was done in cooperation with the residents and that it was, you know, it was done with the consent and pleasure of the community. So, if there is agreement for that, that would be what I would want to see is, and I could certainly see a great deference to the staff in devising that process, but I think we could devise a process that really does allow people to comment and, you know, perhaps even submit their own designs. Maybe we could come up with two or three different ideas, how we're gonna do that. I mean, I don't want to belabor this forever, but this is something that the people have taken great notice of and they've spent considerable time talking about, and they're gonna remember for some time to come what we do on this subject. So, for that reason, I think it maybe deserves a little bit more of our time.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like Mr. Meyer to review, I guess, the cost of these changes, what it's gonna cost the city to do this.
The cost estimate to change out, or to add Vista underneath Paseo Santa Fe is estimated about $28,000. And to modify the flower, that element with the hummingbird, is estimated about $11,500.
So why, why does it cost so much? I guess...
Well, those costs represent the engineering because we're attaching things to the sign. So it has to be, you know, someone has to analyze that and stamp it and engineer it. Then you have the fabrication costs and material costs. Then you've got the equipment to rent the cranes to put it, take it off and put it back on. And then also the cost of the traffic control.
Does the whole sign have to come down or just it gets added on? So the street will actually be closed and all that, too?
Yeah.
So, businesses would be affected as well, potentially?
The street, I would think the street closure would be a one-day event, twice to take it down and put it back, take pieces off and put pieces back on.
All right. Thank you. That's all for now.
Okay. I don't see anybody else pushing their buttons over there, but I would just say that no matter what, no matter what we do, somebody's not gonna be happy. I mean, we could change a whole sign and then there are some people that aren't gonna be happy. But, just so you know, I'm on the community all the time at meetings and I hear, I know that online you're not hearing good comments, but I hear lots of good comments that people really love the sign. And so, they always don't know what, you know, what is this about? Why are they, you know, saying that? So I, just so you know, I hear the other side, too, a lot on the other side. It isn't just the people who come here or are on that website. There's a lot of people out there who don't, don't do that or just, you know, just give feedbacks. So, anyway, does nobody else have anything to say today? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, am out in the community all the time, multiple events every day almost, and I hear so many positive comments on the sign, that they like the sign the way it is, and the comments that would be changing it would be to add Vista to it, which is what I said a year ago, that it should have Vista in there somewhere. So I like the iteration where we just add the name Vista to the sign. As far as the flower, as far as our beautiful California lilac, and as hummingbird, I like the hummingbird and I like the flower. I think when you look at the illustrations of anything that you put into a silhouette form, you might lose a little bit of context and dimension of it, but you also add context to the flower when you're looking at the hummingbird getting its presumably nectar from the flower. So I like our hummingbird and I like our flower, and I would not be in favor of changing that or putting Vista as one iteration of the design you saw said to take that out and put Vista up in the arch. I would prefer, as you have it on your screen, that would be what my, my recommendation would be, is to do, just add Vista to the sign as we see it on the screen right now.
And I would agree with you on that. I think, I mean, I'd like to see Vista on there. I, I think it's a beautiful sign, and so, but I'd like to see the word Vista underneath. I think that would be fine. A lot of people have said that. I think that's where I hear most of the agreement on it, so, but people don't seem to want to have it changed. They like the Paseo Santa Fe. They actually like that, and it's a designation of that, that neighborhood, so, okay, so, Councilmember Aguilera, did you push your button again?
I did, but I think you, I was just going to second, I guess, what Deputy Mayor Rigby said, so, but you already did, so.
Okay. Did you push your button again?
I, I did. So I guess with that, I'll make a motion that we change the sign to the iteration that we see here, just taking Vista, putting the name Vista underneath the sign, and not altering the flower or the bird.
I'll second it, then.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
Would the council entertain, in addition to that, that we publish this drawing for 60 days for comment before we, before we make our final decision to proceed?
Okay, so how about Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kind of just second your comments and Deputy Mayor Rigby's comments that, you know, I've been out in the community quite a bit over the last couple of weeks and actually have approached people and asked them, what do you think about the sign? What do you think about what's going on in Paseo Santa Fe? Initially, I would say half of the people outside of downtown didn't, haven't heard about it. Over the last couple of weeks, people have started to hear about it a little bit more, and most of the people that I've spoken to have said, we like Paseo Santa Fe, we understand that it's not a gateway entry to the city, it's naming that corridor and it's identifying Paseo Santa Fe, so I think that part of it is, is very important. Personally, I would like it to say City of Vista underneath, but Vista is okay. So I think both of those work, so I'm going to support the motion on the floor.
Okay. And my only other thing I would say about putting it out 60 days or whatever, no matter how, you put it out there for three months, and you're always going to get different people, different, different opinions, but it comes down to the, some of us have to make a decision on it, and I, and I hear enough in the community that I think that if we put Vista on there, that it would be supported, so. Councilmember Franklin?
The last thing that I'll offer is, I just want to point out that we got ourselves into a situation where we had an outpouring of public comment, and a lot of it unhappy because of the fact that we made a decision and finalized it without adequate time for the decision to be aired publicly before it was final. And I would just point out that this design was first revealed to me sometime last week when this packet came out. I don't think that this design existed prior to last week, and I think that tonight is really the first public showing of the design, and so I would just suggest again that we may, we may want to spend some time advertising this image before we finalize it, but that's the end of my comments.
Okay, well, we'll see no other speakers. We have a motion and a second, so I would just say, cash your ballots. That motion passes with one abstention. So, okay, moving on to the next discussion item, which is the Planning Commission applicant And with that, let's see, how are we going to do this? We're going to conduct the interviews of the Planning Commission and then vote on the appointments, and so we'll start with each person, what, no.
Kathy wants to say it.
Oh, Kathy wants to say it. Sorry, Kathy. Our city clerk will take, take over here.
I just wanted to give a little bit of a overview or introduction to this. The city will be conducting the Planning Commission interviews in accordance with City Policy 200-Jash-06. There are two seats on the commission with terms ending June 30th, 2016. Jeremy Keller, one of the applicants, including your packet, has withdrawn his application, so you'll be interviewing the two incumbents and five new applicants. Each applicant will be given three minutes to introduce themselves and address the questions posed in the agenda report. After each introduction, you will have an opportunity to ask applicant for questions, ask applicant questions, sorry. Once all applicants have been interviewed, I will call for a vote. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and have you call folks up for their interview.
Okay, so we will move forward on this, and we will start with Tom Fleming. And you know, do you have the three things you're going to tell us about?
I do, and...
What qualifies you? Okay.
I do. My name is Tom Fleming, and each of you should have a little flyer that answers the three questions, but I'll, I'll speak it, but you have it in front of you there. As I said, my name is Tom Fleming. I live in Vista since 1975. I have been on, I am a planning commissioner. I have been a planning commissioner the last four years. I have owned a shoe repair shop in downtown Vista for over 30 years, retiring this last year. I am a senior volunteer patrol with the Sheriff's Department, so I'm out and about seeing what's going on in that respect also. The, I've served on the downtown specific plan committee where we've talked about going through the specific plans. When I went to work in 1984, there was nothing to speak of in the downtown. Broadway went both ways. Mayor Ritter was teaching jazzercise. There was Broadway, the street that, where my shop is. People literally drove up to the front door. There was just no street to speak of there, and since, that, that said, I've had an opportunity to see all this happen downtown, the changing of Jefferson into Vista Village, the main street being changed, all the different things. So I've experienced a lot of what's gone on in Vista over the years. I believe that the last four years, we've done a good job as a, as a planning commission. And in fact, my recommendation is that you maintain in the status quo with Rick and myself reappointed. That would be my suggestion. I believe it's important to have a balance on the, on the commission. You don't need a whole bunch of people saying the same thing. We have people on there that are very technical in their knowledge, that get down into the real nitty-gritty of plans. We have others that are more into the landscaping, more into the safety, and we have in overview. I consider myself more of overview, common sense part of the commission. That's where I come down on it. I like to believe that I represent just the, the average Vista, not, not the rich person, not the poor person. I'm a working guy, that's, that's what I am, that's what I represent. Question number two, let's see here, the most important thing in my view is keeping the balance in, in Vista. The question is, in your opinion, what's the most important development issues that face Vista? And I believe it's keeping the balance between what Vista was, the historic Vista, what the old timers, if you'll forgive me, are used to, the, the country town, and, and the balance with what is new and what has to be, the growth that is going to happen, that has to happen for our kids to have a place to work and to live. And so I think that is probably the key thing. And last but not least...
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. I'll, I'll end it on that. You've got my answer there in front of you. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll see if, wait, 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 because I'll have to see if anyone has any questions.
Oh, okay.
So any of my councilmembers have any questions for Mr. Fleming?
I, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, Mr. Fleming.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Good to see you again. I, I wanted to ask you particularly, what do you see as the role of the Planning Commission?
To me, the city council is the one that makes the final decision on everything. I think the Planning Commission's job is to relieve some of the, the time and pressure that would be necessary for the city council to, to go at, look at every project from top to bottom and deal with all of it, the staff time that would be involved. It's an opportunity for us as a planning commission to take early review of these projects, to make decisions on them, to look at them, and some of them are things that are, shouldn't be done, and it's an opportunity to keep you all from having to go through that. On the other hand, it's an opportunity to tweak some of the plans they've got, to add parking, to add amenities, to check on the street park, things of that nature, that saves the time so that when it does, if it does come before you, that you have the opportunity to look at a more complete and finished product.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Okay, seeing none, then I will call our next applicant, which is Richard Rosseler. Hi, Richard, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers. It's Rick Rosseler. I'm called Richard when I'm in trouble, so...
Well, you're not in trouble.
Hopefully, I'm not in trouble tonight. My wife and I live at 1809 Queensway in here, here in Vista. My qualifications, I'm going to go pretty quick because Tom's time ran out on him, so we'll go quick here. My wife and I have been residents of Vista since 1974. My qualifications include the four years that I've already served on the Planning Commission. I have a bachelor's degree in geography and a master's in public administration, both from San Diego State, and I had a 30-year career as a planner, dealing with everything from general plans down to architectural review, building permits, and improvement plans. Part of that was here in the city. The first eight years of my career, I was in the planning department here in the city. We have stayed here, and during the, during that time, we did the Vista Townsite Specific Plan, so lots of experience. My reasons for applying, I enjoy being a planner, and I missed it after I retired, so I, when the opening came up, I submitted my application four years ago. I think my level of experience can help build a better community, and I have the time to serve the citizens of our community now that I'm, I'm retired. Important issues that I see coming for the city is the mixed-use residential-commercial designation. I think we need to go back and take another look at that, especially from the parking standpoint. I don't have a problem inside the transit radius, the quarter-mile transit radius, of giving a break on parking, but outside of that, I think we're seeing that we need the full parking standards of our regular zone and affordable housing. I think this is going to be a growing issue for the city. How many of us know people whose adult, adult kids are living at home because they can't afford a place or there's overcrowding? From what I've read in the paper, legislation coming out of Sacramento is going to make it more difficult with affordable housing bonuses, which is something that's been a problem for the people that have come and testified before the Planning Commission. So I think, however, that the city has come a long way, I am just really excited about the Paseo Santa Fe project. It implements all the stuff that we were doing down in Chula Vista on the O'Teagah Ranch, and I think, I think it's just great, and I'd like to see it commit, continue. The step that I, I would do to evaluate plans, of course, general plan consistency, if it's not consistent with the general plan, it doesn't even come to the Planning Commission. Implementing zoning standards is another, another level of review. And then the design guidelines call for neighborhood compatibility, and so when we have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, we try and listen to the neighbors and make whatever changes we can.
Your time is up.
Okay.
So I'll ask for any questions. Councilmember Campbell?
I do have a question. You actually brought it up, and I was going to ask you about it. What are your views on how do we address the housing crisis that San Diego County and even here in Vista that we have in terms of lack of housing unit availability?
I think the, the density bonus is, is one, one process that, that we need to take a look at. There was an effort earlier, may, may have been over a year ago now by the building industry that asked us to get rid of our inclusionary housing requirement in multifamily projects, and I led the effort on the Planning Commission to say that was a bad idea, that we have a housing problem, we need more programs to provide affordable housing for our, for our residents, so.
So you're supportive of ways to increase the availability of affordable housing options?
Yes. And if that includes density bonuses, I know that wasn't, that's not popular, but it is one way to address the, the issue.
And, you know, those are out of our hands at the state level anyway, as, as a council and as a planning commission. It's merely our job to apply the state law on that, sometimes as unpopular as that may be. So, thank you.
The thing about, the thing about the inclusionary housing requirement, though, is that it spreads the units throughout the community and doesn't concentrate them in, in one location, which I think is a good idea.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then I will excuse you and go to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick. The next person is George Aposhin. It's George.
Where's that clock at?
You have three minutes.
Where's that clock at, so I, I don't want to get in trouble.
You know what? When you, it's right down in front of you there, and when you see the, no, no, on the top.
You'll let me know.
And if you see the yellow light, then you will, then, then the yellow light means you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. My name is Georgia Aposhin. I live at 1324 Cypress Drive in Vista, of course, and I've been there since 1983. Same wife all those years, four great kids. I have the City of Vista to thank partially for that. Of course, myself and my wife also contributed a bit for that. They're all very successful, doing very well, and again, I think Vista was part of that, that puzzle that put it all together. My, to answer the questions that were emailed to me, what are my qualifications to serve on the Planning Commission? I don't have any formal Planning Commission experience, however, I lived in Chula Vista, born and raised there, San Diego State Liberal Studies degree in political science, history, and journalism. I went into a entrepreneurial period of time to where I was a owner and operator of Cook's Corner. You may have remembered that chain of stores, highway, gourmet housewares and cookware in all the regional malls. Was also working partner for Earthcraft, a 50-store chain up and down the state of California. With those two working positions that, that I had, I had a chance to work with, of course, the regional malls, which are very difficult to work with in, in a lot of ways, but you do learn, demographics, traffic patterns, traffic flows, aesthetics, and of course, making a profit at the end of the day. As far as, and those were in, in the 80s and 90s, in the, later on in, in the 90s, I was a franchise consulting, consultant in that I worked for, did projects for Foodmaker. I also did projects for El Torito. The second question, the main reasons I am applying is I want to give back to the city. I mentioned a little bit earlier that I've been here, the only house I ever purchased. Looks like I've spent, at the end of the day, three quarters of my life here in this town. Again, very happy, very grateful for the way things have turned out with my family, and I can only, again, thank Vista for, for a major part of that. Most important developing issues facing Vista in the near future is certainly, I think we're riding a crest. I mean, Huffington Post looks at us and puts us as one of the 10 coolest places in the country to live. I, you know, it's coming to fruition. You all get A pluses in my, in my estimation. Want to keep that going. So, again... So, again, it's not an easy job. You're on the edge of keeping things going and yet making it safe.
I need you to wrap up here.
Sure, I'm wrapped up.
Okay, okay. Let's see. Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Aposhin.
Hello.
And I wanted to ask you, you tried to answer the question about why you wanted to be on the Planning Commission and you wanted to give back to the community. There are many, many ways to give back to the community that you love so much. Why the Planning Commission?
Well, the Planning Commission, I heard that they needed somebody, for one. Two, I use a lot of the fun things to do in town. I play a lot of tennis at Brangle Terrace. I ride my bike daily to the 24-Hour Fitness off of Sycamore. I've also been hit by a car on my bicycle riding to the 24-Hour Fitness, so I have concerns about traffic patterns, safety, the building of commerce without taking into account the safety factors. We have children. I now have grandchildren that now moved from Manhattan, New York, 57th and Lexington, two blocks from the park, and I'd like them to grow up in a city that they can actually walk on the streets and, you know, not be hit by a car. Something else.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, may I ask a second question? Okay. My second question for you would be, I see, and you talked about your previous experience with shopping malls. How do you see that experience translating into what you would do as a Planning Commissioner?
Well, you know, regionally, I had malls that I've traveled to, Visalia, San Mateo, Santa Rosa, Fresno, Sacramento, I mean, throughout Mission Valley, Fashion Valley, Canoga Park, I mean, all of them. In the '80s and '90s, it was, you couldn't -- every month, there was a new regional mall, which was the mecca of retail in its day. And so, you saw, you saw things happen, good and bad, and it just, it comes together. You see the map. One and one actually does equal two. So, with those kind of, you know, we all have seen Encinitas, that El Camino Real, that between the new building of the Home Depot and Encinitas Boulevard, it's just a nightmare for traffic. I mean, trying to get through that part of town and that city, I know if they had a chance to go back, they would do things differently. So, I've seen a lot of those things, and I can, I believe I can bring those to the forefront when I do see a conflict or you see a situation like that emerging.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Couple of questions for you. First, I think Deputy Mayor Rigby, you actually asked and touched on why the Planning Commission versus some of the other commissions in the city, and, you know, the City Council sets the zoning for the city. Do you see the role of the Planning Commission being to approve projects that the City Council has approved for that type of zoning? And, more importantly, do you see the direction of the city in terms of the building that we've been doing in terms of residential, mixed-use zoning as good, or do you disagree with that?
No, I like what's gone on. I mean, everything up to this point, as I mentioned earlier, I think you all get an A. From what the past two decades I've lived with here has been a very stagnant, undeveloping, unthinking, and sloth process. So, what I've seen in the last five, six years has just been amazing. When I can get kids of mine that live in Manhattan, New York, at a pricey part of the town, buy a house in Vista and bring their kids to -- I mean, that's something. So, it's great. I want to get all my other kids here, so let's make, you know, Vista even better. But, it's all going, you know, it's all going very well, in my opinion.
Then, the final question is the same one that I asked the previous applicant. Are you familiar with the housing crisis in San Diego County, California in general, and what are your views on how to address housing availability?
It's, you know, it's certainly a very difficult question to answer in a few moments, but I have to only say that we have a jewel here, and so we have to take that into account when we set a movement in motion to think down the road and not give anything away, because I think we have something that's very valuable here, and to just wholesale it out for a quick decision, it just doesn't make any sense anymore. Sure.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Our next person will be Jacob Bell. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Ritter, City Council. My name is Jacob Bell. My wife and I live at 1925 Alta Vista Drive, and I am interested in being on the Planning Commission because I love this city. I moved here three to four years ago after moving from Northern California, very small town in the Central Valley, attended UCSD and then USD Law School. I now work at a law firm in Solana Beach that does real estate, construction, land use, pretty much anything dealing with property or buildings going up or down, mostly litigation before, after the buildings go up, when they go down. Insurance companies get involved sometimes. I see us living in Vista for a very long time. Both my wife and myself have a lot of family in Vista, Oceanside, and up and down the coastline, and frankly, a lot of them migrated here after I went to college because they figured out why I snuck down here. I am very proud to say, and it's not related to this at all, that my first child was born five days ago, and so I haven't slept a whole lot, but it is very exciting to see what's coming in the future. I first visited Vista in the early 2000s, and downtown was not active. There was nothing down there. I think I had a friend who tried to open a small shop, and it was quaint and dated, basically. And to come back up here in the last five to seven years and see what's happened is absolutely incredible. I think that what I bring to the table is the law degree in part and the balance and the mediation perspective in the other part. My understanding of the Planning Commission is nothing compared to Tom and Rick and the other people. I don't have the years of experience they do. I do have a good perspective from my legal career of what it takes to get information from someone who is in a business, who is offering actual details on a project they want to build, clearly for financial gain, that's what we do, we're in business, and to take that and to try to balance that with the needs of the city, the needs of the residents, and to make sure that not just five or 10 years from now, but 20, 30 years from now, when another layer and another layer and another layer is built on top, that we have a city and an organization that is fit for my kids and their kids and everyone else to actually enjoy and live in. I would say the most, the thing I'm most excited about is the walkability and the public transportation right now. I think it's a huge deal. I personally think we're going to see huge changes in the future with examples like Uber and self-driving cars. I don't know the details of that. I haven't done any examination of that, but I think those are the kind of issues that have to be taken into account when dealing with housing density, when dealing with actual procurement of land for either commercial or residential use, because the roads are going to change, and things are going to change, traffic's going to change, and so we have to have a little bit of perspective on that as things go down the road. So, I'm happy to answer questions about my background or give you any other details if you'd like to know.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, you must have been very thorough. I don't see any questions.
No, it's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next person is Lawrence Johnson.
Good afternoon again. Nice to see you. I'm certainly humbled by the previous speakers. I do think I'm out of my league on this one, but just to take up my three minutes because they're available to me. I'm an airline pilot by trade, and I come from an extensive background of training and working with foreign services, customs, rules and regulations. So, I've got a lot of experience researching and dealing with various avenues of information. I didn't see this really as a, I saw this more as a volunteer position to kind of assist. So, again, maybe I'm out of my league on this one and should just withdraw my...
Well, you're never out of your league. You just keep telling us about yourself. You're okay.
Once again, we live here at 2222 Alta Vista Drive. My family's been here since the mid-'70s. I've been here since about three years now. My wife, we have two kids who go to school here, so we've vested interest in Vista and seen the continued growth and changes that are coming along. We want our kids to grow up in a safe community and have affordable housing and have opportunity to be safe on the streets when they ride their bikes and when they drive their cars and when they need to get places with public transportation. So, again, I just was hoping to volunteer my services to assist in a committee, to do what I can to provide some experience that I have with planning and managing. That's about all I have to offer.
Okay, well, maybe we have some questions. Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Johnson. It's good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Deep breaths.
I'm sorry?
Just take a deep breath.
Relax, yes.
You're an airline pilot.
Exactly.
And we did interview you for another commission, and you had alluded to some of the skills that that brought to your life. I would like for you to expand a little bit on how do you think those skills that you have learned and used as an airline pilot would translate into the work that a Planning Commissioner would do?
Exactly. Thank you. Good question. When I go to my job, we're given lots of information to digest and to plan a flight, and we do the best we can with the knowledge and information that we're given, knowing full well that at any moment, at any time in the process, it could change. So, I like to approach everything with my job and with planning, just with that in mind. It's information that I can gather to plan the best that I can and that we can to provide a safe and successful mission, knowing full well that at any time, things can change and having to adapt to those changes at any moment.
Thank you. And a second question would be, and I think it was one of the ones that was emailed to you or that you looked at, but if you answered it, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your answer, but it would be, what would be an important development issue that you think is facing Vista right now?
Well, I think there's, like the previous speakers brought up, there's a lot of issues that need to be looked at thoroughly, and I'd like to think that, to approach each one individually, taking into considerations in monetary reasons, growth reasons, restrictions reasons, even, and especially what the city, what the residents want. Approach each one individual thoroughly, researching and trying to understand it, and not to approach anything with a preconceived notion that this is how it's going to be or this is what it is. We're seeing changes come daily, you know, with the public transportation, building, growth, jobs, coming and going, moving, you know, it's something which each issue comes across the desk or the table, needs to be thoroughly looked at, which might be a roundabout way of answering your question, but...
I got it. Thank you.
So, seeing no other questions, we thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
The next person will be Carl Latta. Welcome, Carl.
My name's Carl Latta. I live at 1502 Independence Way. I'm a mechanical contractor, local here in Vista. I've been in Vista since 1987. Moved here with my family, and we have a successful business also here in Vista, doing mechanical contracting. Most of my work is with the government. A lot of the work that we do is contracted directly with the government, and we do a lot of naval work and things like that, mostly where we're at. Little bit of GSA work and also city government work downtown. Qualifications are my background with being in mechanical contracting and the reading plans and understanding procedures and everything from the ground up all the way to the finished product. I think probably the biggest thing I, what I would add to the committee or being on the committee would be to try to vet the processes that are presented to the Planning Commission so that we understand them, we get a thorough understanding and a realization of what needs to be done before they're even presented to you guys, so that a lot of the groundwork's already done and you guys get a fully-vetted process that you understand will work when it's put together. Talk fast. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I don't see any. How you doing, Sidney? We're all set, so I guess that's all. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. And our next person will be, and this is our last person, is Denny Leggio? Leggio? Welcome.
Thank you. So, my name is Denny Leggio. I live at 1322 Morning Glory. Been here, resident of Vista, all but two years of my life, and I'm currently the senior facilities planner for the Superior Court of California. My office is in San Diego, but we have nine facilities in San Diego County, including the one here in Vista. My qualifications as planner for the court is, basically, I've worked with all these agencies, you know, I've worked with state agencies, city, local governments, MTS, Sandag, local police departments, sheriff's department, county. So, I've worked with all those for different developments, different facility-related things. We have, currently, downtown, we're building a new courthouse. It's a 22-story building, very large, monumental project down there, very, very cool, and, you know, we've got all these agencies, we've got the city, we've got MTS, Sandag, everybody's involved, everybody's kind of got a piece of it because you're right there in the heart of the city. I should get to the questions. You know, I don't think I have anything new to add. I think all the other speakers have kind of spoken to some of the development issues with, or not, I don't see them as issues. I agree, you know, the last four years, the last five years, maybe even, maybe longer, have been really exciting in the City of Vista. There's a lot of activity, there's a lot of hype and interest, you know. As a kid, I remember things being stagnant for decades, you know, a long, long time, and that was really, really depressing, but keeping up with the momentum, the craft, kind of, good development is like, is a ripple effect, like dropping a rock in a pond of water. When you do that, it kind of ripples out. So, good planning creates interest and creates activity and kind of builds upon itself kind of organically. I think that's all I have.
That's okay. I see a couple of people have questions here. Councilmember Regulera?
Sorry about that. You own a business here in Vista?
I do.
And how do you feel, I know we talked about your, you know, your plans with that and all that. That's not important right now, but how do you feel that being a business owner here in Vista would affect your decision-making and as far as being on the Planning Commission?
You know, I think it helps because it adds perspective. I have the government background. I've got the, you know, the very public agency, and then I've got the private background as well, being a business owner and entrepreneur, and what it takes to do that and be successful at both, hopefully.
Okay. And then, you said you, I believe you said you've lived here all your life, right?
Yeah, I was born here at Tri-City, or born in Tri-City and Oceanside, and I've lived in Vista all but two years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Kind of a similar follow-up question that I asked some of the other applicants, but a little bit of a different take on it because you do have experience in government. Do you see yourself being able to apply the standard and rule of our zoning and the local laws and the state laws, even though you may get a packed house of people saying we don't want this, but understanding that there are property rights that that property owner has? How do you balance those two competing interests?
Hopefully, there's, hopefully, we're given an opportunity to explain why, you know. Again, I think knowledge is key when it comes to that and sharing that and giving people the full story. Coming from the public sector, you get a lot of what you just described, so...
So, do you see yourself being able to remove your personal opinions in those types of cases?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, then I think that's all of our applicants, so thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, this is... And actually, this is a hard decision, you all are so qualified. I could make you all a new planning commission. Put you all on there. So, City Clerk, where do we go from here?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call for the vote. Each council member has two votes, you may only cast one vote for an applicant. If an applicant receives the majority vote of a quorum of council members, which would be three votes, that applicant will fill a vacant seat. If the ballot does not fill both vacant seats, the process will be repeated with only those applicants that received votes on the prior ballot who were not seated pursuant to that ballot. If necessary, a third and fourth ballot will be conducted using the same process. Should seats remain unfilled following a fourth ballot, the mayor shall fill a seat by making a selection from the applicants who received the highest number of votes on the fourth ballot. And in the process, I will announce the applicant selected to fill the seats. Please use the ballot provided to you to cast your vote and pass your ballot down to me so I may announce who each council member voted for.
This is tough. Okay, so they pass them all, pass them off? Should we fold them so we can't see?
I'll read them out.
Are you going to read them out over there? Okay. Don't be reading them, I said, City Manager, don't be reading. As I go by. Mayor Ritter, we have Richard Rossler and Jacob Bell. Deputy Mayor Rigby, George Apashen and Denny Leggio. Councilmember Aguilera, Richard Rossler and Jacob Bell. Councilmember Campbell, Richard Rossler and Denny Leggio. Councilmember Franklin, Tom Fleming and George Apashen. So with that first round, we have Richard Rossler appointed with three votes, and we'll go ahead and do a second round to fill the second seat. So do we have other ballots somewhere?
Yes, I'll be passing them out just a minute, I'll with those. Do you want to take a few minutes, or just wait?
Could you announce the tally for each candidate?
Tom Fleming had one vote, Richard Rossler, three votes, George Apashen, two votes, Jacob Bell, two votes, and Denny Leggio, two votes.
If I may ask the city attorney a question, is there a process in this to have a discussion? Interim, the balloting process?
There is nothing to prohibit that. If the policy describes the voting process, it doesn't say that there can or cannot be discussion.
Okay. Mayor, if there's any desire to have a discussion, since there seems to be quite a split...
Oh, I see some, I do see, okay, Councilman Campbell.
That was on there from before, but, from previous, but I'm happy to comment.
Oh, that was for the, that was for this, oh, okay.
And I hit the wrong button.
You're taking my ballots back.
Taking your ballots back.
Okay, no, we're clear, so who, did you want to say something? Councilman Campbell?
I think, Denny, like you, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your last name, Leggio, is it Leggio?
Yes, Leggio.
Okay. I think your qualifications, your balance of business owner, combination with the government experience, would serve the city well. I think that your long history here in the city, the comments that you made about the last several years in Vista, the positive changes that we've been making, I'm assuming you'd like to see carry that forward. I think all of those factors combined together would bring your experience and some new ideas and to the planning commission, so that's why I'm supporting you for your appointment.
Does anybody else want to campaign? We're getting our ballots here. Oh, it's changed.
So yes, the process is that on the second round, those who received votes but were not seated are on this ballot. Anyone who did not receive votes or was already seated is taken off. The current ballot has Tom Fleming, George Apashen, Jacob Bell and Denny Leggio.
I like them all. Do I have to vote? Okay, round two. Mayor Ritter has Jacob Bell. Deputy Mayor Rigby, George Apashen. Councilmember Aguilera, Jacob Bell. Councilmember Campbell, Denny Leggio. And Councilmember Franklin, George Apashen. So we will need to do a third round. We have two votes for George Apashen, and two votes for Jacob Bell, and one for Denny Leggio. So the next round will have those three. So again, you'll have one vote. Councilman Campbell, are you going to campaign again?
No, I'm actually going to ask if one of the applicants could come back up to answer a couple of questions.
Okay.
Jacob Bell. Now come the tough questions.
Oh, boy.
So, in your law practice, have you had experience, I'm sure the answer's going to be yes, but I want to ask it, experience dealing with city planning commissions, approval processes for projects?
Yes, and in the city of Vista specifically, well, I mean, yeah, it was the city of Vista, it was the Hyatt Place Hotel off Melrose Drive. My firm represented ABA Development, and I don't think I was licensed at that date, I was working for the firm but hadn't passed the bar at that point, so I was working on the project when my name's not in any documents, which is a nice way to have it. So that's specifically in this area, and then part of our practice over the last six to 10 years, more so in the late 2000s, less so with the slow of developments in the last couple of years, has been hotel and hospitality development for entities. And so I've dealt with Placer County, I've dealt with several counties across California, doing reassessments, doing changes to the actual tax deals that the hotels get and what happens after the fact. So I've had some experience, it's not extensive, but I'm certainly familiar with the basics of the process and the procedure.
And then, what's your personal views on affordable housing, density bonuses?
I think that affordable housing is absolutely necessary, and I think it becomes somewhat of a hot-button topic, obviously, which is why you're asking about it. Just to segue and tell me if I'm off-base here, but I think the role of the planning commission is often to explain to the people requesting either a change, or a permit, or some process, but also to explain to the public who are at the meeting or hearing what's going on, why a decision is made. And I think you asked a really good question earlier about, can you enforce a rule or a law that's out there and do it in a way that you may disagree with, but you can still explain why it's valid and why this has to be this way? I currently serve on the Mobile Home Committee Review Board, and much to Mr. Meyer's chagrin, we had one case last year, and that was it, and I, you know, it was resolved, but it sounds like there's not issues there. I was fortunate enough to preside over that, and I hope that what we got across during that decision was, we feel for you, I understand that there's frustration on both sides of this disagreement, but we have to actually follow what's in the code, what's in the law, and the rulings that have come down at a higher level. And so I think that the planning commission and hopefully the council is able to interpret, you know, those codes and laws, even if they personally disagree with them. So therefore, my views on affordable housing, I don't have a lot of details on that, I'm fortunate enough to have a decent job and to be able to afford housing, and so I think that it's necessary, and I think diversity, go on.
You answered my question sufficiently.
Okay, perfect. This is the lawyer in me, I'm sorry, I can just keep going, so...
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Councilman Aguilera, do you have a question for him?
I do. Well, first of all, I do want to say that I think Mr. Leggio has got a good background for this. I do like the fact that you're a business owner, and your experience building downtown and that, but I think it's, I don't want to say redundant, but I think we have a lot of that already on the commission, that's one of the only reasons I'm not supporting you. The reason that I do want to support Mr. Bell is, he's also got a lot of that experience as well, but he's kind of from a law background, and I'm looking to round out our planning commission, and, you know, I know that Tom was a great addition in the past, being a business owner downtown, that was one of the most attractive things. So I think Mr. Bell would be a good addition in that he would attack things or see things from a different angle because of his law background. And I think you've answered some very good questions, good answers for some tough questions, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other speakers, so are we ready to vote again, guys? There you go. Okay, is this, is this the third round?
Yes.
And if I go to the fourth round, then I have to do it?
After the fourth.
Oh, after the fourth round.
Cross your fingers.
Yeah, let's hope somebody wins. Okay, Deputy, I'm sorry, Mayor Ritter, Jacob Bell. Deputy Mayor Rigby, George Apashen. Councilman Aguilera, Jacob Bell. Councilmember Campbell, Jacob Bell. Councilmember Franklin, George Apashen. So we do have a winner, we have Jacob Bell. So the two individuals that have been selected are Jacob Bell and Richard Rossler. City Attorney Piper will prepare a resolution to confirm these appointments at our June 14th meeting. Okay, thank you, and I just want to thank all of you for coming and, you know, joining us in this experience, it's new to us to do it this way, but I also want to thank Tom Fleming, because he's done an amazing job on there for many years, and I want to thank him for all of his input in the downtown as a businessperson, so... Oh, I have more speakers? Are these old or new?
I got, yeah, I just wanted to also congratulate our planning commissioners, and thank Tom for his service, really appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
As deny, I want to thank all the applicants. I know it's not always a fun experience coming up before a group of the city council here to tell us about your background, and thank you all for doing that, and hopefully you'll continue to stay involved in the community and apply for other commissions in the future. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate what my colleague said. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of the applicants, this was not an easy decision to make. Everybody brings something unique as a resident of Vista to the table, everybody brings with them another piece of the fabric that is Vista and the Vista experience. And I appreciate very, very much that you all put your name out there, you put yourself out there, that you came up here to talk to us and share that with us. So I appreciate that, and to reiterate, Councilwoman Campbell, I hope that you all stay involved, and that you apply again, or apply for different commissions, and stay involved in the community. And Tom, thank you very much for your years of service as a planning commissioner, we appreciate it very, very much. And congratulations to Mr. Bell and Mr. Rossler, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
What's so important, I'm going to say it for the fifth time, I do want to just reiterate, and we really appreciate all of you applying, taking the time to participate in the process, and truly do hope that each of you will continue to look for another way to engage, and I know the staff and the council are dedicated to helping everybody that wants to get involved, get involved and find a leadership position within the city, so thank you.
Okay, so, is this, okay. Moving on to the next discussion item, which is a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at southwest corner of Sycamore Avenue and Watson Way. And so John Conley is going to, he's the Director of our Community Development, and he's going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just for clarification purposes, when we get requests to amend our general plan or zoning, if the staff doesn't have any major objections to the application, we typically bring them to the city council right out of the gate to discuss the plan change and give you an opportunity to provide input to the staff and to the applicant. And so that's what we're here for this evening. There's no final decision being asked for, or no really decision at all in terms of what's being requested tonight, other than to provide general input on what the applicant would like to do with respect to the land use change. So with that, the subject property that we're looking at this evening is at the southwest corner of Sycamore Avenue and Watson Way. It's shown in the overhead here. There's a larger project site of 6.8 acres, which is shown with the solid red line, and then there is the subject site, which is one of the five parcels making up that property that is zoned residential, and that's in the orange. So the majority of the properties are currently zoned commercial, the property that's shown with the orange overlay is zoned residential. In order for the applicant to move forward with what they'd like to do on the property, they'd have to rezone all of the properties to commercial use. Just for clarification, when we updated the general plan in 2012, we had a number of community forums where we discussed specific properties that were requesting zone changes or general plans, or that there had been requests by developers to do developments there that weren't consistent with our current plan. This was one of the sites which we discussed in a workshop in October of 2010. At that time, there were a number of different types of uses being considered, and there was no specific zoning that the staff was really supportive of, and so the direction from the council at that time was to leave the zoning in place, recognizing that it was different in terms of the types of uses that could go there. And once we got a proposal for a more comprehensive use of the site that we were supportive of, that we could consider the land use change at that time. So we're before you this evening, tonight, to discuss that. As I mentioned before, of the five properties on the site, four are currently zoned and designated for commercial use, those are the pink shaded sites in the top picture. The subject parcel is a two-acre parcel that's designated low density in our general plan, and zoned E1, which allows half-acre residential development, or an overall density of two units per acre. The proposal would change the general plan designation to commercial neighborhood, and the zoning to C1, which is shown in the lower right-hand corner. The applicant this evening is a real property entitlement group, they've submitted a conceptual site plan to develop the property with a residential care facility for the elderly. This is a classification in our commercial zone that is permitted with a special use permit, so if the council is supportive of the request for a zone change this evening, the applicant would have to come back and go through the formal approval process for a special use permit, which would be at the planning commission's discretion and appealable to the city council. So as I mentioned, this item was scheduled following a submittal by the applicant for discussion to obtain direction from the council. For these types of requests, we typically notify all property owners within 500 feet of the site, and that was done as well for this evening's meeting, they all received a mailed notice. And with that, staff is requesting direction from the council on the land use change. I also have... requesting direction from the council on the land use change. I also have the applicant here who has a couple of slides that they would like to present following my presentation as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I have speakers. I have 1, 2, 3, 4. One is the applicant. So—and I see applicant next. Okay, so we'll have the applicant. You can present next.
Here's the—
I do?
Quick through my slides.
This one?
This one?
Okay, okay.
I'll keep you going with the reverberings.
Are you Forrest, or are you Darrell?
Yes, I'm Darrell.
Okay. I have two from the applicants here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the time to review our project. My name's Darrell Club. I'm a developer based in San Diego, in real estate development, construction for about 40 years now. And my partner, Tom Joffson, is in the audience that joins me. We're both partners in Real Property Development Group. And Real Property Development Group has a very specific business plan. We basically search for properties that are worthy of development, that meet the market conditions, and then we proceed to purchase the property, entitle it, and then ultimately develop it. Excuse me. The business model that we have requires that we partner ourselves with qualified partners, particularly in the area of residential care facilities, and senior housing, and senior care. And such a company is Age Mark Corporation out of Aranda, California, who operates facilities in different states. But they're headquartered in Aranda. And Mr. Forrest Weston, a partner in that organization, is here this evening, and he will address the council upon the conclusion of my remarks. I want to, first of all, before I go any further, state my appreciation, our appreciation, for this forum. This is fabulous for a developer to be able to address the council, the ultimate decision-maker, to get some input, for we spend a ton of money trying to guess what you're going to like. So we really appreciate this program. I think it's the smartest—I tell you, I've been doing this a lot of years, and this is very refreshing, and I just want to pass that on to the council and the city. We're in the beginning stages of a due diligence period, pursuing the purchase of this property. And this is really the first step besides our site plan that's represented here in that process. And again, this is going to be very helpful in how we proceed. The site, as you can see, in the upper right-hand corner, the bluish area, that is basically the residential care facility for the elderly building itself. It's a single building, three stories in height, over underground parking that meets all the parking requirements for that building. It's a total of 130 units approximately, and it will consist of about 90 units of assisted living care, including ambulatory and non-ambulatory care, plus about 40 units of memory care, or Alzheimer's care, if you will. The other areas that make the kind of an L shape, starting from the left side, running down Watson, and across the back, that will all be independent living, starting with age-restricted 55-plus on the lower right corner, and crossing that driveway in the middle, there'll be a bridge connecting the two. And then the balance of that building that goes all the way to Watson and returns back up to Sycamore will house a total of 140 age-restricted apartments, where certain services will be offered to the 55-plus residents that they can select from, where the 62 and 1/2—or I'm sorry, 62-plus seniors will have a comprehensive care program that does not include personal services, but includes things like meals, and laundry, and housekeeping, and activities, and the like. Between the buildings, there's a lot of space that we've left for landscaping and features to give it a really open feel. We're going to instruct our architect to—our landscape architect—to focus on kind of a campus-like feel, and give a feel of community rather than a care facility. As far as the structure of the site, it's—there's some grading involved, but we're going to target a cut-fill balance to minimize any excessive need for any import or export. Our goal would be to balance it out within reason. And we haven't had a chance to do much more research on the grading plan at this point, but a cursory view of it, I'm convinced that we can keep that at a minimum. At an appropriate time, we will be embarking on a third-party market study to prove up all of our demographics and all of our assumptions, so that we know that we're building the right product for this area. Our indication so far is everything looks great. We love the area, love the community. Should that market study indicate that a project of this size might need phasing, we'd probably ask for approval for a phasing program, where in Phase 1, we would build out the residential care facility for the elderly, plus maybe 80 to 100 units of the age-restricted units, leaving the remaining 40 to 60 units for a second phase. But that's—the one of the purposes of the market study is to determine The city will benefit mostly from tax revenues, as Planning Commissioner John Conley has pointed out. We're taking an undervalued, underused seven-acre parcel, and we're going to reinvent that into a project that will produce tax revenues for the city, which obviously will be available for infrastructure, schools, budget gaps. It'll mitigate against the need for tax increases. And city growth in that area along Sycamore will draw other new developments and other businesses to that corridor. And it's a very desirable place. This community is a great place to retire. It will draw families and friends to the facility. And very importantly, it will provide jobs, starting with construction, and continue on into long-term management and staffing of the facility. As far as compliance, I want to thank Commissioner—I'm sorry—Planning Commissioner John Conley for his excellent job in laying out the general plan amendment and the zoning that's required. And we're really encouraged by the possibility of a six-to-nine-month turnaround for a permit. That's great news for guys like me, when some cities require a year and a half, two years, if you're lucky. The project will be designed for a best-in-class application. By that, we mean—we want to be state-of-the-art. We want up-to-date design. We want up-to-date aesthetics. We want the campus-like feeling that we talked about. And this is a great spot, a great city in San Diego County, and we're confident that the demographics will support this project. I'll show you some samples of architectural ideas. These are—I went the wrong way. There's—these are projects by our architect, who by the way, will be—continue on with the project, will be Marshall Smith of Architects Orange, a highly thought-of architectural firm out of Orange, California. I've worked with him in like 30—for the past 30 years, actually. These are some of the examples that he has put forth for us to look at, to get an idea of the aesthetics. We haven't decided whether we want to go for a more conventional look or a traditional look, but there's a few, if I can do this right. This is the kind of look that we want for that site. I like this particular elevation because it shows some landscaped area. That would be one of our goals, is to make it real pleasantly pleasing. There's a shot of a typical pool area. It'll be three stories like this. And here's another really good shot of the landscaping buffer between the RCFE and the age-restricted. We want that open and landscaped to where it's very pleasing. This, although it shows five stories in the back, we would obviously be limited to three stories, but this is one of my personal favorite architectural designs. And we can look through those, and if you see something you like, I'd sure like to hear your comments. At this time, I'm going to have Forrest Weston from Age Mark come up and address you, and then once he's concluded his part, then I'll rejoin him, and you can ask us all the questions that you like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. Welcome, Forrest.
Thank you. I'll be brief, and then I'll be here to answer any questions you have about specifics on what a residential care facility for the elderly is, or independent living, or any of these terms. Age Mark is a family-owned and operated national senior living company. We've been in business for 30 years. We're based in Aranda, which is in Northern California, a suburb of San Francisco. We have 15 communities that we currently own and operate. We have two additional under construction that'll be open this summer. And then we have several that are—we own the land and are working through the entitlement development process. Of those, we have two existing California properties. One of them is under construction to be completed in August, and then several of the developments are here in California. Our company, basically, our stated goal is really to focus on the individual senior and to provide for them in terms of their body, their mind, and their spirit. And we take each individual senior as not a number, or everyone is an individual and has a life story. And especially as a senior, everyone has wonderful stories to share with the community. And one of our wonderful things that I think we do is we get out and we become a part of the community. Our goal really is to be a stitch in the fabric of any community that we come into, because we are taking care of Vista seniors, and we want to share their life stories, and have them have an ability to do intergenerational activities with schools, with Boy Scouts, with Girl Scouts, with a variety of things. So we really don't want to isolate our seniors. We want them to be a significant part of the community. As Darrell said, we have a great architect, Marshall Smith of Architects Orange, who we've worked with in the past. He is well-respected in this industry, and we have found that Vista is a lovely community, and that the demographics appear from our internal market studies to support a project of this type. So at this point, I'll invite Darrell to come back up, and happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to hear the other speakers first? Do you want to ask questions? Do you have questions? I see. The speakers first?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then if you—we'll take the other speakers first, and then we'll ask questions. So if they have questions, then they'll call you up. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. So we'll have other speakers that are going to come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was like, oh. Okay. So first is Stephanie Jackle, then followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Jackle, 1500 Green Oak Road in Vista, and speaking for myself tonight, but also partly for Southeast to Communities. I would like to ask if Mr. Conley could tell me, if this changes to the CN and C1 zoning, what will the density dwelling units per acre be then?
In the commercial zone, there is no maximum density, because the only residential use that's permitted is a residential care facility. So the limitation on density is really controlled by their ability to meet the building envelope, the setbacks, the building height, and the parking requirements.
Okay, all right. I think with some reason, Southeast to Communities is pretty leery now of large residential developments like this. And I know that it's serving a very important and necessary purpose, which I certainly support. But even looking at this, I am wondering—it—even now, appears to be out of scale with the surrounding neighborhoods. The density is—if you look at the overheads, great. And we are concerned about the architectural compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, and finally, parking. So I would just ask you to please consider, there are residential neighborhoods surrounding this. What will happen with them? Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Three points briefly. I'm very much against change in a low-density zoning to a high-density zoning. There's not much low-density property left here in Vista. That's one of the things that makes Vista beautiful. If you look at all those areas that are not developed, urban areas that are just homes that have been built on half-acre, three-quarter-acre, or one-acre lots, there's a beautiful message there and a beautiful story for Vista, to have those communities. And to wipe out two acres of low-density housing is something that I think would be a disaster for this property. The other thing is, general plan changes seem to be happening at will here. I understand as a charter city, we're not obligated, or don't have very many restrictions, if any, about changing the general plan. But then that brings—the begs the question, what is the purpose of the general plan? If we're just going to make changes every time somebody wants to do something, then we really don't have a plan. We're just making things happen ad hoc. That's not to say that I'm saying that we don't have to be flexible, but to come to every city council meeting and find that there's a general plan amendment seems a little bit excessive. And then one of the things I did not see in the report, or heard about, is there a need for a retirement slash nursing facility here in Vista of this scale? What's the existing capacity? What's the demand? That would be something that would be interesting to know before we, you know, commit to building, or zoning, making the zone change to have this facility. And I guess as a little side note to the earlier comment, even if we don't redesignate this two-acre parcel, there's probably a plan that can be put in place in the remaining or the existing commercial zone to allow this facility to go in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McSweeney.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor for the Building Industry Association. I want to make it perfectly clear that I don't have a dog in this fight. But listening to the conversation, I felt I wanted to weigh in. I've told you before—I've told John Conley this—that, you know, you have the best guy in the county at this. But I think that what the developer said bears repeating. The fact that he can come here, show you something in a conceptual form, as he does his due diligence. I've talked with all of you privately, when we've talked about how to bring down housing costs. A truncated process like this, not just for his project, but for other projects, saves money. Is there a need for this? Yes. And this is where I'll speak from my heart, my personal experience. And this is where I'll speak from my heart, my personal experience. Moved my folks here six years ago from Cleveland. Dad got to the point where he needed just that little bit of help and being 3,000 miles away, I couldn't help him. They ended up, I did what I considered the tour of the county, going to seniors' facilities. They ended up moving next door to Paradise Valley Hospital in National City. A beautiful campus, five-story buildings, first floor is parking. It looks like a huge project. There's hardly any traffic. The people that work there either take the bus, or they drive, they carpool. The seniors that do drive, they're not in and out, in and out, in and out. And folks like my mom and dad, they didn't drive. I was their wheels. They pretty much stay on campus. And the beauty of something like this is, I've seen a number of your residents of all ages come here. They want to remain in their community. I didn't want to have to have my dad come to Vista. National City was 15 minutes from my house. Just close enough, but just far enough. So I think that when I look at something like this, you know, where are your seniors going to live if they can age in place? The average lifespan now for a male in our country, I think, is 83, women 85. My dad passed at 85 a year ago. But having this type of a facility, so when they're late 70s and they're on a downsized, they can live there and then as things progress, as they will, if they need more help, that's exactly what happened to my folks. They went to independent living. Stepmom had a stroke. Dad now is partially handicapped, couldn't care for himself, so I was doing the in and out every day. Got him set up to do his food so after two days, you know, he could do it on his own. And then he passed suddenly. Mom now is in assisted living. So when you look at something like this, I don't want you to consider, you know, the size and the mass. It's not going to generate the kind of traffic problems. And I would bet you my bottom dollar that when he comes back with his market study, you're going to find that there is a significant need for this. People aren't living shorter, they're living longer, and I think they want to stay near home.
Thank you. Nolan Morgan?
Is it possible to put up that first picture that shows the proposed site? Yes, but with the highlighted, there it is. Just to the left of the proposed highlighted area, that's my house. We bought the property that's right there. It's four and a half acres, goes all the way from what used to be Oleander all the way to Watson Way. And knowing that the zoning there was half-acre, and that that piece right there would be four homes, we bought that property. And we were going to keep the same zoning that we have and only put an additional four houses on four and a half acres. So this would impact us because we'd have a three-story building right behind, would now be our backyard. So I'm just saying, the zone change for us impacts us enormously. It will reduce the value, not only of our home, but of the four homes that we plan to put there. Keeping the zoning that is there, so that Watson Way, the amount of traffic back out on the Sycamore would always remain a little bit lower. We always knew that the property that was along Sycamore was commercial, so we knew that. But right behind the house there, that two acres, we were looking at four houses. Now we're looking at about, how many? A hundred and something with a three-story building. So that's enormous for us. So tonight, I'm just being selfish and just saying, you know, I understand, my mom's a senior. I'm going to, I think I'm a senior next year. So I understand the need for this. I'm just saying, this was our hope, that that property that's directly behind us, I guess it would be in front of us going towards Sycamore, was going to remain that. And that would be horrible for us. Good enough? Okay, thanks.
I think that's all our speakers. So with that, I see I have, I'll start with Councilmember Franklin.
So is the project that you propose, is it going to be a three-story project?
Yes, it's a 35-foot height limit. Could I have the clipper? Yes, it will be three stories. As Plane Commissioner, Plane Director pointed out, there's a 35-foot height limit that we would stay within and that basically setbacks in building height contain the building layout. Now, what we've done, just to respond to one of the concerns the gentleman had, the, let's see if I can make this thing work. We put a roadway.
Where are you doing?
Okay. We put a roadway.
Can you talk on the microphone so we can hear you?
I'm sorry.
We've surrounded the perimeter of the project with a road to give some separation in consideration of our neighbors. It's interesting also to point out that the E parcel, E1 parcel, it's virtually landlocked. If you put commercial along Watson Way and along Sycamore, there's no practical way to get to that site. And I would submit that half-acre sites there would not be very desirable with a commercial usage right over the fence. So we would seek a design that buffers the property line so this gentleman's not so impacted by our building with a roadway and landscaping and some nice features. It's going to be a really good-looking building. And then we can control our grade, our site grading to keep the project low. And that's the purpose of the cut-filled balance. And in order to accomplish that, we may wind up having to export material to get the grade down rather than have it be such a big superstructure over the site. So we take every effort to, our exposure to our neighbors to.
Let me ask you a question about the grading.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me ask you a question about the grading.
Yes, sir.
My recollection of this property, which is kind of my neighborhood, is it is a pretty steep elevation on the particular parcel in question.
That's correct.
Okay, so that begs the question, might you have need for a retaining wall at the, what would I guess be the back side of the property if you're going to take the level of the earth down there?
Yes, along the orange area, right where the dotted line is about the center of the site at the lower end, that's approximately the high point. There's a, I believe, if I recall, about 70-foot grade change in the extreme. There's a lot of low land along Watson.
70 feet in height?
Yeah, there's a, I looked at the, the only thing I could do is look at the USGS survey. And I looked at the contours and determined that there's about 70 feet to deal with. However, Watson Way and Sycamore, that corner, existing grade is substantially lower than the street.
Right.
So the answer to your question is yes. Along that property line, I envisioned, we haven't designed it yet, but I envisioned a really good-looking planted crib wall or some terracing.
So that being said, there's a possibility that your structures wouldn't actually rise to a 35-foot height in measurement from the neighbor's property?
That, I believe.
You see what I'm saying?
I believe that's.
So because you're going to, because you're going to reduce the height of the earth there.
Yes, that would be our intent. And, you know, we have a lot of design work to do on that, but that would.
Sure, I understand. One of the points I was going to make even before this came up, is having some familiarity and looked at this property before, is the grading on the particular parcel in question that you're requesting a zoning change on, my supposition is the grading being so steep at present, it might make it difficult or undesirable for someone to develop for residential purpose.
I don't believe that's the case.
No?
No. We can terrace the site, for one thing.
Right. What I'm trying to say is, it seems like there might be grading challenges if we don't entitle the property for your use.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You've got the resources to do the grading to make the whole project work. What I'm saying is, it seems like there are some grading challenges with the property that would require significant financial lift and therefore might make the property less desirable for residential as it's currently zoned.
Yeah, and I believe.
Does that seem like it's a reasonable analysis?
Yes, I think that is true. And I believe.
Mr. Conley, do you think that's a reasonable analysis?
I think it can certainly be graded for residential use, if that's your question.
My question is, might the cost of utilizing that property as it's presently zoned be prohibitive for the purpose for which it's presently zoned?
In the current economy, that's likely yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not trying to go out of my way to make an argument in your favor. However, I am familiar with the property. The grading is very steep. 70 feet is an extreme change in elevation.
Right.
And I think it would be, I think it would be a little bit prohibitive for somebody to do the grading work to really build in there. So the point that I'm trying to make is, your use of that, because the size of your project, you have the resources to do the grading work, might make this a feasible thing for you, while it might not be feasible for the other purposes currently entitled. I do wish your project was two-story. I realize that cuts a third of the volume out. But I would have been, I would have jumped out of my seat for a two-story project. I'm not saying I'm not supportive of a three-story project, but, you know, think on that because it is getting to the height where it's out of character with the neighborhood. And that does become kind of an issue, although you're kind of approaching the edge of the residential area there, so maybe. But I think that's something I'd sure like you to take a look at. I'd sure like to know if something was still possible there.
Well, there are office buildings across the street, so that, we're kind of tapping into that a little bit.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense.
And the grading operation, it sounds extreme, but keep in mind that the grades along the street are substantially below the street level.
Right.
So that's going to take care of a lot of that. And that extreme, the extreme low point is at the upper end of the property.
Right, towards the corner with Sycamore.
And you get 50 feet away from that low spot and it starts going up rapidly, so.
Let me close my comments and let the other council members have a chance to ask you some questions. I want to say that I am generally supportive. I trust that you're going to meet with the resident who wants to land behind you, connect with him tonight, and attempt to develop some plans that might alleviate his concerns.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I always like it when a developer has a adjacent property owner comes back and says, you know, we met with them, we talked about options, and, you know, gosh, I'm not that, I'm not opposed anymore. Sometimes you can work those things out, sometimes you can't. But I appreciate your best efforts there.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to generally say thank you to everyone who praised the process. That's really good to hear. It's good for us to hear. So, thank you. And thank you for bringing your time and your investment dollars to our city. We do appreciate that.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. So generally, I'm going to say I'm supportive of the zoning change for the following reasons. One, this is a use that is a low impact to the community in terms of traffic compared to a commercial shopping center or an industrial office-type building. I think the traffic counts are going to be much lower for this type of project. It's needed in our community. It can be developed in such a way, as Councilmember Franklin said, that limits the impacts to the surrounding property owners. And I do think that this one partial that's zoned differently than the rest is underutilized potential. If we don't change the zoning for that, I don't ever see it being utilized for anything beneficial, not only to the community but to the city as well. So I think this is the best and greatest use of the site, what you're proposing. It serves a need in the community. It brings in tax revenue to the city. It has very limited impacts on the surrounding community. I think this sort of architectural style is good.
That's the one you like?
Yes. Not a big fan of this one.
Same one, I like that.
This one, no.
That's that one?
What's your opinion on that one?
Prefer the traditional?
Yeah, that one, I said.
I second this. I thought this was, I thought this was a picture of the Monarch Apartments, which is one of our standard bears that we really like.
Yes. So this one's good and the last one's good.
Oh, yeah, okay, the one, yeah, the last one.
This one. So I know we're kind of just in the zoning change phase now, but you brought these to us, so wanted to give you that feedback before you got too far.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Down the road and we all tell you, we don't like it. Change it completely, which we don't like that for anybody's sake. So those are my comments. There's always going to be some concern and hesitation and reservations on the surrounding communities part, which are definitely understandable until a project like this goes in where, you know, you hear 200-plus units and they think it's going to be a traffic nightmare. But my experience with.
Can I comment on that a little bit?
Sure.
Although it's a 270-unit project, when you look at residential care facility for the elderly, a unit is a bedroom. And a bedroom can contain either one or two beds, as opposed, and that accounts for 130 of the units. So that number is really a different definition than apartment, senior apartments, where a unit will be a one- or two-bedroom unit and some studio units as well. So that, hopefully, that's a satisfactory answer for the enormity of that number. It seems so huge. But we're staying within the building envelope and we're actually under it considerably because we wanted some, the setbacks are more than they need to be from the property lines with the roadways and the landscaping and the interior campus-like feel that we want. We're going to really try to make the site look open, as open as possible.
Yeah, I definitely noticed that, that you're not, you know, seeking to build the maximum under the requested zoning change and the setbacks.
And the truth of the matter is, the market study is also going to play into the quantities. We have to convince a long-term lender, and he might come back and say, wait a minute, you know, maybe you should be a little more conservative in your program. So we'll have to see how that plays out. There's answers we really don't have yet.
Right. And that was going to be my next comment, is a lot of this is market-driven. You know, it's really not, in my opinion, for the project side of things, our place to tell you, no, we think there's only a need for 100 units to serve the senior community in Vista. I think, you know, a lot of it is going to be market-driven, what you're able to get financing for, and ultimately, what you're going to be able to utilize, so you're not going to build substantially more than is actually needed.
Right. Well, the baby boomers are 70 now. And the statistics hit at age 72 for folks that need care, starting at age 72. So by the time we get this built, we're going to hit that number. And what's interesting, if you look at the demographics and the projections for the aging population, in addition to the already growing need for senior care, when the baby boomers hit, starting here in a year or two, the number's going to go up a substantial amount. I won't throw a number out tonight, but it is a substantial increase over what the rate is right now. And so, you know, there's really little doubt in my mind, but we have to prove up the stuff with market studies and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
And also, I wanted to point out, too, that. And also, I wanted to point out, too, that we're having only one ingress egress point along Sycamore. And it'll be for the RCFE, which has, as someone else pointed out, has minimal ingress and egress, unlike a strip center or some other commercial use. So, it really will be a minimal impact on Sycamore. And the entrance to the senior apartment, assisted living portion of the site will all come off Watson Way and take advantage of the traffic signal. So, that should really turn out to be a minimal impact. And I think the director would support that consensus.
So, I did have one question for Mr. Conley regarding any prior proposals for this site. Has there been anything?
There's been a lot of them. Mostly multifamily, market rate, single-family, small lot subdivision, commercial uses, other senior care facilities, U-Haul, outside storage, RV storage, you name it. We've seen a lot of requests on this property over the last 10 years.
None of those sound quite as appealing from a neighborhood and community standpoint, in my opinion, as this one, especially outdoor storage. Those types of uses don't seem to be a very beneficial use. So, that's all the questions that I have at this time.
Can we, you guys kind of move along? We have a long way to go yet tonight, but Councilwoman Aguilera.
I'm going to go through all the same questions.
Oh, thanks.
No, I, I'm generally supportive. I just, I have a question on the layout. The three stories, I thought I heard is the blue area.
All the buildings proposed are three-story.
All are three-story?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, because I thought this was, okay.
The blue area is the residential care facility.
Residential care facility.
Assisted living and memory care is blue.
Got it. Okay, so then the back, it would also be three stories as well, the back of the property?
And someone brought up parking, all the parking will be subterranean. We will easily have plenty of room. I'm sorry, excuse me. There'll be plenty of room for the parking requirements, and we're not going to undercut it. With RCFE, you don't need a lot of parking, but we never go to the minimum because it just doesn't make sense. We're going to have to build a podium-style building, so it's not hard to get adequate parking.
Okay. And then, okay, that's the only question I had, actually, for yourself. Mr. Conley, across the street, there are, it's a medical, there's medical offices, is that right?
Correct, across Sycamore.
Those are two-story?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with earlier comments that were made, and I've said it many times, that our general plan was done with a purpose and a vision. And I'm not generally in favor of changing the general plan. And I do have some concerns on this one. First of all, three stories, to me, that is just too much, especially in a residential neighborhood. I do, I heard my council colleagues' comments, but grading can be done for residential, and it's done all the time, we see it happening. And I'm concerned with the increased density in this project. So, I'm actually not supportive of the general plan amendment for this, and I'm sorry about that.
Okay, and I would just say that I'm supportive of this because I think the one in the back, there aren't going to be that many cars that will drive, because most of those seniors are. And I'm 72, I was like, "Am I ready? You better hurry."
Maybe I shouldn't have brought that up, I'm sorry.
They're saying bye. So, but I'm a little bit ahead of the baby boomers, but that generation is huge. And when they start needing those care facilities, there's going to be a big need for those. So, I believe that, and I think this would be a good project for there. So, you know, I always worry about the parking. I don't want to see people parking in the streets, so I want to make sure you have enough parking there. And I know that across the street, the medical facilities are across the street, and those are two-story, so I don't see that this will be that different on that corner across the street. So, actually, I'm supportive of this, and I like the design that Councilwoman Campbell showed. That would be my choice, so. Did you push the button again?
I did, I was just going to ask staff, if you have enough direction, or do you need a motion on this?
No, I think we have sufficient direction, thank you.
Thanks.
So, with that, we're done with this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Our next one, a discussion item G4, Citywide Parking Regulations Comprehensive Update. And I have a lot of speakers on that, but let's see. Paty Chao is going to take us, our deputy director, city planner is going to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers, Paty Chao, deputy director, community development, city planner. Happy to be here tonight to present this item before you, which is regarding a comprehensive update of our citywide parking regulations. And more specifically, we'll be discussing the recommended changes to our parking code. Before we do that, I'd just like to give you a brief background on this parking code update effort to put things in context. So, the update work started in September of 2015. And since that time, we've had, held a total of three workshops, starting in November of last year. And the last one held in February with the city council. The comprehensive update, the last comprehensive update that was done was back in 97, so almost 20 years. So, it is time for looking at our parking code and updating our parking ratios, bringing them up to date. And obviously, since then, many changes occurred in our community from development patterns, from redevelopment and development opportunities in our community. So, at the last workshop with the city council that was held on February the 2nd, several issues were discussed at that meeting, ranging from concerns with parking for residential apartment complexes and preventing problems surrounding apartment complexes. There were also discussions about parking restrictions, the possibilities of that in the downtown area, parking enforcement issues in general, and also a great amount of discussion on mixed-use parking ratios, as well as multifamily development parking ratios. So, subsequent to that meeting, staff and Walker Parking Consultants drafted particular recommendations related specifically to parking ratios or a number of parking spaces that are required by land use, which is contained in Exhibit 2 in the staff report, and that's why we're here tonight. So, that's, the purpose of today's meeting is to go over the recommended draft parking ratios containing Exhibit 2 of the staff report, and to as well obtain direction from the city council on what these proposed parking ratio recommendations are. I'd like to point out that the policy changes and parking concerns in general that were discussed at the last workshop, such as parking enforcement, parking time restrictions, they are not part of the code update effort, and simply due to the fact that they were not part of the original project scope, and due to time and budget considerations, they are, they're not part of this effort. But should the city council wish to discuss these items, these issues can be discussed separately from the code update effort, and also by bringing input from the responsible city departments that would have opinions about those particular items. So, on the next couple of slides, I would like to go over the, oops, I'm jumping ahead here. So, my presentation is going to go really fast. The first slide here on the recommendations, I'd like to start with the multifamily residential, land use category, which is really encompassing rental apartments, as well as attached-for-sale condo projects. And the staff and consultant is recommending new citywide parking ratios, which I will cover in the next few slides, for these types of projects that fall in a multifamily zone, as well as a mixed-use zone. I'd like to point out, though, that when in a mixed-use zone, we're really talking about the multifamily residential-only projects, because there was a concern that was raised in prior workshops, where there is the multifamily residential-only projects that have been processed to date are using the existing mixed-use zone ratios. So, we're proposing to separate that out, and I'll be talking more about it in the next upcoming slides. But basically, these recommended ratios are a result of the consultant looking at highest parking demand that was observed when they did occupancy counts in Vista. And they looked at five market-rate multifamily properties in Vista, which is actually contained in Exhibit 3 of the staff report. We're also, in terms of mixed use, our recommendation is to allow the continued use of the current parking ratios that are in the mixed-use zone related to residential projects only when there is an actual mixed-use project, meaning that there is a residential as well as a commercial component in the project on the same site. As far as commercial land use, there, you will notice in the Exhibit 2 of the staff report, there are recommended changes from the consultant as far as reducing or updating parking ratios where indicated on the table with a check mark. And these are recommended to obviously attract economic development, to be more consistent with what is typically recommended ratios according to our consultant for these types of commercial land uses. In terms of accessible parking for physically disabled persons, one comment or concern that has been brought in previous workshops was about the fact that our total required parking spaces include the accessible parking spaces, which oftentimes are left unused for most of the time, and therefore, reducing the potential of having more parking spaces available for general use. And so, with that in mind, our recommendation is to have the accessible parking spaces counted separate from the regular parking spaces. As far as a parking study, certain land uses, such as the ones listed on this, amusement centers, whether it's a hospital or daycare, they are the types of uses that really would warrant having a parking study done as a tool to allow the applicant to basically propose what is the right amount of parking space for that particular land use, and only because of the fact that the parking demand for these types of land uses can vary significantly. And that's why the parking study is being introduced as a tool in the code for certain uses. And last on this list is the parking management plan that the staff and consultant, we are recommended to include that as part of our code, and requiring such plan for all multifamily projects. And what that does is, basically, it's going to address the parking tabulation for a project, how many parking spaces are, for instance, provided in the form of garage, reserved assigned spaces, visitor parking, how do we treat truck deliveries, loading and unloading, and so forth. So, really trying to make sure that we do have a good understanding as far as how the parking is being addressed in multifamily projects and how it's going to be managed. So, on this slide, I basically pulled some examples. I just wanted to kind of highlight some examples on this particular slide, such as the categories related to banks and financial institutions and community regional centers. And really, just to pointing it out, that on the Exhibit 2 of the staff report, the entire table, some of the land uses, you will notice that there's a check mark next to it. And what that means, it's a Walker consultant recommended a change to these particular land uses based on their database, based on their data gathering, based on their surveys and their studies that they conducted for Urban Land Institute. And that is typically recommended for this type of land use. So, these are the changes that you see with the check mark, and also based on the fact that they looked at or assessed parking demand in Vista. So, it's not just based on outside studies, but it's also based on what's happening in Vista. And last, also comparing it with other North County cities and how competitive or how different, or maybe not that different, we are compared to, for instance, Carlsbad, Oceanside, and San Marcos, as we do want to remain competitive when it comes to parking and allowing for further economic development in our city. So, as an example, for banks and credit unions, our current ratio is at 5.0 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. The proposed ratio, according to this slide, is at 4.6. So, the column next to it is really just to show the net change and the difference from what it is now to what it's proposed to be, which is a negative .4. So, it's a reduction in basically .4 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. And you will notice that all of the land uses that have a check mark identified, basically are identifying a reduction in parking. This one, on this slide, I actually have the multifamily land use categories for rental and attached-for-sale condo projects that would fall and meet this particular ratios on this slide. They are separated in 16A and 16B, and only because we wanted to show what the difference is, the net change is for a rental project compared to what it is now and to what it would be, and the reduction or the negative number that's shown on the net change on the second column. But essentially, the parking ratios are the same. So, when we're talking about rental project and attached-for-sale, we're basically using the same parking ratio, as we're not trying to incentivize one or disincentivize one versus the other, we're treating both as being the same. And I put the Table 2 at the bottom of this, just to show and explain how we got to these numbers. So, basically, on the left hand of the Table 2, after land use, you have the current City of Vista parking requirements for multifamily rental projects, which is started at 2.33. And then, at 2.33, and 2.50, and 3.0, at 3-plus bedroom. And knowing that that's what it is currently, Walker, the consultant, used their database, again, their data collection, the surveys they've done, and looking at different collections, data that they've done throughout Southern California, different communities, in terms of suburban multifamily rental projects. And what you see there for total demand is what they recommend for multifamily projects, for rental multifamily projects, starting at 1.15 for studio, 1.65 for one-bedroom, 1.80 for two-bedroom, and 2.15 for 3-plus bedroom. However, if we were to use that, that would not be meeting or would not be exceeding what the consultant has observed out in our community when they did parking counts and occupancy counts based on the five market-rate projects in Vista. So, in order to make sure that we're meeting or exceeding what the observed parking demand was out in our community, we had to adjust those numbers. And so, what you see on the third column is the recommended parking ratios for Vista, which is basically modifying the second column, or the Walker recommended ratios, by certain decimal points, increasing all of them, so that now we have a ratio or a set of ratios that basically respond to what the needs are in our community, again, based on the occupancy counts and what was observed by Walker when they did their occupancy count for the projects. So, on the next slide, the five projects that they looked at was Sunset Springs, Belatera on Pomelo Drive, they looked at Papawood Apartments, and also Copper Hill Apartments on Copper Drive and Water Leaf at Grapevine Road. The numbers in parentheses, let me just go back here for a second. The number in parentheses, I just wanted to point out that these are the observed parking ratios that were observed for these particular projects. So, it's just simply taking up the total number of parking space that were observed as being occupied for that project, divided up by the total number of units that are occupied. And so, you get that ratio. In the case of Belatera, the highest observed ratio is 1.87. And back to what I was mentioning, Table 2, was the fact that when the numbers were adjusted for Vista, if you were to apply all those particular ratios for Belatera, we would be able to actually exceed that 1.87 number, and actually well exceed, because we would actually achieve an outcome of 2.10, which would be above that observed parking ratio. So, we actually tested it out, those particular ratios on several of these projects. And with those recommended ratios for Vista, we can actually say that, yes, we are exceeding those particular observed ratios. So, I'm sorry about the lengthy explanation, but hopefully I was successful in explaining that. If not, obviously, you can ask me questions on that. Then, on this slide here, I just wanted to provide a quick comparison of the parking ratios for multifamily uses they exist today and what we are recommending. So, on the left side, we have the current City of Vista parking requirements for apartments, again, starting at 2.33. The next column over, we have the current City of Vista parking requirements for mixed-use residential projects, starting at 1.25. use residential projects, starting at 1.25 and so forth, which, again, we are recommending the third column, which will be applying in the mixed use zone for purely multifamily projects as well as multifamily projects in the RM zones. And that's, again, the result of us adjusting the Walker recommended ratios to meet Vista's observed parking ratios. We are not making changes to, as far as the parking ratios for detached condos for sale, so no change there. What it is now is the two enclosed or in a garage parking space plus two gas parking spaces, and that's what it will, we're recommending to remain for detached condos for sale. With that, then the staff's request is obviously to obtain direction from the City Council on these proposed parking ratio recommendations. Then the next steps for staff would be to finalize the draft recommendations and present them, the revised ordinance in its entirety to the Planning Commission and City Council for approval and adoption later on this year. And that pretty much concludes my staff presentation and available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we have, I think I counted seven speakers, so we're going to take our speakers. So first one is Lisa Wellens, and if you could kind of maybe, I'll do three names, and if you could kind of get up, all of you, and kind of stand on the side, that would be helpful. Lisa Wellens, followed by Michael McSweeney, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Hi, good evening, my name's Lisa Wellens, I live at 410 Alvarado Terrace. I've lived in Vista for 15 years, with my husband, we raised our daughters here. I grew up in Brago Springs, and we used to come to Vista all the time. I've seen things change, and I remember when Shadow Ridge wasn't there, I remember when it was a ranch, and when you could see cows from the 78. Things change at every step of the way, we bristle about accommodating more housing and parking and, you know, increasing the density in our neighborhoods. The acreage in Vista is finite, and we can't keep spreading out, and as more people move to Vista, these are the growing pains that we will come to these points where we need to decide if we need space for people or parking. And our demographics are changing, young people are moving here, and this is really exciting. People want to rely less on cars and have more options in how they get around. Vista is a beautiful city, and denser development helps us to preserve our green space and lower our environmental impact. We want to preserve the beauty of Vista right. From what I understand, getting the parking right makes it so that we can have more density in some areas, especially narrow transit areas. I'm going to pitch for my neighborhood now. I live only two blocks away from downtown, and one of the reasons people like to visit our neighborhood is because it's walkable. It's pleasant, and it's not like walking on a narrow sidewalk next to six lanes of traffic and the view isn't filled with parking lots. People like to go out. We like entertainment, we like good food, we like good beer, and we like to travel to it, no matter if the parking is good or bad. We adapt. If we want to go to something in downtown San Diego, we take the coaster, we use the trolley. If we want to go to the Oceanside Farmers Market on Thursday, we can take the Sprinter. Downtown is right next to our transit center, it is accessible by the bus and the Sprinter, and as long as they run often enough and late enough, people will use it to get there. During our big festivals, right, we got one coming up, people use the shuttle buses. So we know people will come, even if there isn't an abundance of parking. So that is my parking pitch for my neighborhood. I don't think we need bigger parking downtown, more parking lots would ruin it. If anything, we need more housing, more restaurants, galleries and entertainment. I attended one of the workshops on parking, and I learned a lot. I learned about how it impacts businesses and their ability to move here and to meet requirements, and that was really helpful. I looked at the parking ratios and how we compare with other cities, and ours are either the same or more generous than in the cities that surround us. So I didn't find anything controversial in it. Another thing is-
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, my last thing is I hope we would not have such high requirements for parking that we would miss out on having something, you know, really neat for Vista that would benefit all of us.
Thank you. Michael McSweeney, followed by Cliff Kaiser, followed by Don Wilson.
I won't reintroduce myself. A couple of things I wanted to point out. The staff requirement, it seems that we're trying to, in some ways, solve the sins of the past. And trying to legislate or change policies to cover sins of the past is very inefficient in a couple of ways. It looks like what the parking consultant came up with and then staff's recommendation is they're trying to, you know, split the difference between the two, and there's an unintended consequence in a couple of areas of that. As the parking ratios get larger, it gets more difficult if you're trying to provide three or four bedroom units to comply. But one of the hats I wear at the BIA is not only the affordable housing, but stormwater. So when you raise your parking requirements on an apartment, there's more spaces, more impervious surface, all right? You're on the hook to implement all the rules set in place by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So actually, while you're trying to, on the one hand, solve a problem, you may be exacerbating another problem over here that's harder to deal with. So I would think long and hard, you know, the consultant that the city hired is well-known, well-respected, and I think that by taking their recommendations and then providing a fudge factor to make sure that, you know, you're not under parking, you may be creating more of an issue long-term than, you know, you really want to. So I would solicit input specifically from developers and find out how that affects their ability to bring product to market. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser, followed by Don Wilson, followed by Gil Wiltenberger.
Good evening again. A couple of points here. Almost every day in the paper or in the news, I don't read the paper anymore, the news, we're seeing autonomous vehicles, self-driving cars, Google, Apple, Tesla, and even the major manufacturers are now talking about that. So when most of the bureaucrats have drank the Kool-Aid and say, "We need mass transit, people are going to use their bikes," they're not. It's being forced on us, or trying to be forced on us, but the fact of the matter is, people want to get to go where they want, when they want, in the vehicle of their own or something that can listen to what they want to do. And these autonomous vehicles are going to take them where they want to go. And that doesn't mean we're going to have less vehicles, we're going to have more vehicles. And not only that, as I mentioned, I think in prior meetings, we're going to have younger people, we're going to have school-age kids jumping in a vehicle to go to school. They're not going to be doing mass transit, they're going in a vehicle that'll take that one person from their home to their school. Now, that could, in fact, be some sort of rented vehicle or community vehicle or something like that. But I'm very troubled by the fact that we keep trying to reduce roads, not invest in highways, not invest in parking, when in fact, the technology is changing to the point where people are going to get what they want. They're going to get a single vehicle for a single person to go from point to point. And I don't see too many council or municipal people talking about that. The Hessen sales tax that the county, Sandag, wants to put on all of us is saying the same thing. They're putting maybe $30 million or $300 million out of 18 million? No. A very small percentage, I can't remember the numbers, a very small percentage in roads compared to mass transit, bike lanes, walking paths and all that other junk. The last point is the, I think we're in a time that we've seen in the 50s, 60s and 70s, when cars just started to come around, to be readily available to most people that they could afford. So many of the homes, even here in Vista, were built with one car garages, or maybe no garages, maybe just a carport. And now, those same homes now have two or three cars, because the mother and the father and the two kids, they all have their own car, because they're driving to high school, they're driving to college, whatever. So a home or a resident that was designed for one single car now has four of them. And if you look at most of those older communities, you see that the streets are, in fact, loaded, overloaded with parking, and even some of the new facilities, like the apartment complex on South Melrose that was just put in a couple of years ago, they can't even park the people that they have there. So I would encourage you to delay implementing this plan and reconsider increased parking.
Thank you. Don Wilson, followed by Gil Wiltenberger, followed by Nenya Hammond.
Good evening, my name's Don Wilson. I am a registered professional engineer and traffic engineer. I worked on the general plan several years ago, I've written several traffic reports and parking studies in Vista, and I thought I'd take some time this evening to come share my thoughts on the report that's being presented. I have had an opportunity to review the staff report, I also attended the February council workshop, been following this fairly closely. I did want to note that Vista, in my experience, has had the highest parking rates relative to multifamily housing projects, and working with several developers across the county, that is a big issue for them. So comparing where you're at in this report to your surrounding neighbors and the practice that I've seen all over California, I think you're really falling in line with the standard practice. And in addition to looking at the actual parking rates, we do several parking studies that show that those parking rates, when parking is well-managed and you have a good parking management plan, are very effective at containing the cars for that site on the property. So I definitely think Vista's going in the right direction relative to bringing those parking rates to a more comparable level with the surrounding communities. One thing I did want to comment on this evening, though, is that when you provide excess parking, it does become, it provides little benefit for the project, and it can create all sorts of other issues if those areas are underutilized. I'll give an example, I live next to a library, and at night, that library parking lot is empty, and I see skateboarders, and I see all sorts of people hanging out, so much so that the police department in my city spends quite a bit of time sitting in that parking lot. So I would encourage the city to look very closely at looking at mixed-use parking standards for areas, not just within one site, but across multiple sites, and not limiting the ability to do a mixed-use parking study just to the uses that were listed. In fact, when you have multi-use, multifamily projects within a fairly dense area or compatible uses, I think there are opportunities to share parking across different properties, so that you don't have these large vacant parking lots underutilized at night and creating uncomfortable circumstances for the people who live around those areas. I know there's been a lot of comments now about biking and walking and livable communities. I am a very strong believer in healthy communities and providing options in transportation, so providing surplus parking is really encouraging people to continue to use single occupancy automobiles. There is a trend now toward autonomous vehicles, which are really going to become a fleet, not a per-person owned auto. But the trend towards Ubering in the future, self-driving vehicles, that's really where the future is, and I do believe that over-parking sites today are going to have a negative effect in the future on projects in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gil Wiltenberger, followed by Nenya Hammond, followed by Dennis Bergren. Remind you to do three minutes, and could you state your name and your address, please, for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Gil Wiltenberger, live at 3660 Merced Drive in Oceanside and here at Shadow Ridge. I own a home in Vista, and I also conduct business in Vista. I've been in the residential development business for 20-plus years, have built many, many projects throughout the Southland, and almost every day, the topic of, and the issues of parking come up on projects. It's a hot topic. And I like to pose something to you, isn't parking really a necessary evil? And if we didn't have to have it, wouldn't we just do without it? And the reasons I say that is, is parking is costly, it's very expensive. Parking produces no meaningful property tax. Parking produces no sales tax revenue. Parking takes a valuable real estate that could be used for additional square footage of retail space, office space, residential uses, recreation spaces. Parking is impervious surface that you have to clean, you have to clean the water, that's the law. Most parking spaces sit empty most of the day, non-productive. It almost sounds like I'm describing unwanted relative that you had to invite to Thanksgiving, right? It's kind of this unwanted thing. My experience with parking is just enough. If there was no regulations, we know we have to meet the market, we would park it appropriately because we wouldn't want a project to be hamstrung by not having it enough. But I can tell you that anything more than just enough is just a waste of good resources. We need to encourage public transportation, walking, biking, and dampen the use of the automobile. And it was brought up earlier about if you're going to encourage it. The Google car, self-driving cars, the reality is, if you have those, those things are moving all the time, they're not really parked. Think about, you have a garage, you park your car and you leave that, you drive to work, and you park in that spot, that spot's empty over here. So the reality is, if the car, self-driving cars and Uber cars and all that are moving all the time, they're really not, we actually don't really need that much parking. I understand parking is a hot topic, it's really stemming from, really, what I can see is older projects in the city that were inadequately designed and coupled with poor onsite parking management. But I don't believe that a few bad projects should really dictate the conversation and the forward planning of new projects, when there is an abundance of data proving that modern parking requirements, as seen in North County throughout the four other cities that surround you, that those, that data is adequate, and we have experts that tell us that, like the city's consultant. With that, I would encourage the City Council to revise the multifamily base density on the three-bedroom. I think it was on, it's Exhibit Two. If you really look at it, Walker recommends that it be 2.0, that's the base, not the, including the guest parking. Right now, you have it at 2.5, that would have a huge impact on projects.
I need you to wrap up.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nenya Hammond, followed by Dennis Bergren, followed by Val Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, my name is Nenya Hammond, and I live at 2225 Coolin Greenway in Encinitas. Thank you for having us here tonight for the interesting topic of parking, we appreciate your thoughtful consideration, we've sat through the workshops and read the staff report, and we think you're moving in the right direction with the reduction in parking, excuse me. But in looking at the studies, as have been mentioned here earlier tonight, studies show that parking on a larger scale induced more driving and more cars. In fact, Donald Shoup, professor of planning at UCLA and author of The High Cost of Free Parking, states that parking minimums distort transportation choices toward cars and thus increase traffic congestion, air pollution and energy consumption. They reduce land values and tax revenues, they damage the economy and degrade the environment, they debase architecture and urban design. If you adopted the changes proposed tonight on a sample 200-unit residential project, that would equate to more than 90 excess spaces from your neighboring Oceanside standard. For that residential project, that is roughly 29,000 square feet, more than half an acre of additional parking that's required versus the City of Oceanside. That's impervious pavement that doesn't serve to produce tax revenue, jobs, contributes to our global warming. Instead, this area could be used for recreation space, the planting of shade trees, the treatment of water, an area to provide someone a home or create a job. I encourage you to further reduce the parking requirement, as Mr. Wiltenberger mentioned, for the three-bedroom units, that's the most impactful change, dropping that down from the base of 2.5 to 2.0, as you see on the two-bedroom requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Bergren, followed by Val Brown.
My name's Dennis Bergren, I live at 1134 Casa Medidway, and I thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor, Council members, Mr. Conley, Ms. Chow. I believe the staff has done a very nice job in the presentation they made, I would really like to get a copy that I could review myself. But what I'd like to do is read an email that I sent to the council members and Mr. Conley, and for the benefit of the audience, after the second workshop that we had, and it says, "I've been reviewing the parking requirements from the workshop on February 2nd. Looking at the different parking ratios for apartments, multifamily zones, mixed use and downtown specific plan, the package in to its multifamily residential parking survey on page 22, only one of the projects listed in that parking workshop pamphlet that we had on February 2nd met the requirements." What happens when you have a multifamily unit and then you put a mixed-use ratio in it, you get parking spillage into the neighborhood. Now, I can, you know, sympathize with the developers that, yeah, parking costs a lot of money, but if you don't have sufficient parking, people are going to end up parking- But if you don't have sufficient parking, people are going to end up parking everywhere. And the pictures that they showed in the latest plan, you know, of the different facilities that are here, nice pictures, but they don't show the street leading into the entrance to that, to those facilities. There is nothing but lines of cars, as far as you can see. The parking ratios, in some cases, may be a little high for studios, but if you don't supply enough parking, no matter what kind of management plan you put in, nobody's going to be able to satisfy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Val Brown.
Good evening, Val Brown, 562 Job Hill Drive. And thank you for the time that you've invested in this very controversial, challenging issue. I don't think there is a one-size-fits-all. And some of the things that occurred to me, just in reading our general plan, it says here that sandbag projections show a trend towards larger household sizes in Vista. In 2010, average household size was 3.15 persons. By 2030, it'll rise to 3.26. What we're seeing in our neighborhood, and we do live right next to the apartments, I agree with Mr. Bergren that those pictures do not accurately depict what those apartments require for parking. The city actually recently opened up 70 more parking places in front of Bellatera and they are constantly full, as are the bike lanes being parked in. So I understand what the development community is saying as far as, okay, so this makes it harder for us to build. Well, if we don't build it and we don't try and find ways to change parking behavior, if we take neighborhood-serving commercial out of neighborhoods where you have to get in your car and drive, we're not building the environment that's going to support having less parking. So it needs to be holistic. To say that we're just not going to provide more parking because it makes us more economically competitive and we don't have a mindset change about how we're living in our community, it's not going to get us where we want to go. So it has to be a two-step process. And the change that's coming about is slow. So say, for instance, we take an old apartment building that's overparked today and it's time to tear it down and rebuild it and we lose the new parking ratios and there's already an issue. How does that affect the surrounding neighborhoods? So I think that there's, parking is one piece of it, but I think it's bigger. I think that we have to look at how we live in our community and how do we get to that ideal where people are using alternative forms of transportation? And how do we address what our general plan says? We routinely are seeing, you know, single-family homes that are turning into rentals with five and six cars. So I respectfully ask that we maybe have a larger discussion before we make a decision on where to go with this. I know a lot of time has gone into this and I certainly have empathy for the development community. I understand their concerns, but I do think we need to have a bigger look at this. So thank you kindly for this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of our speakers. So I see Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few comments and questions regarding this. This has been a long time coming to the council, the study. We've had a brief discussion on this previously. And the first question is, based on the observations made in the multifamily projects that are existing, it looks like we took the highest observed number and went off that, which doesn't seem to be perhaps the most effective and accurate way of determining future projects, assuming, you know, we take five, we find the one that has the absolute highest and use that and then add more on top of that. It seems like we're trying to accommodate a problem that's not there by adding to the highest. I mean, I'm looking at this, so Sunset Springs, 1.2, 1.25 for Pepperwood, 1.5 and 1.67. What's the rationale behind going after the highest number and using that versus using an average, which I believe the average was 1.5 versus 1.87?
That's correct. The average was 1.5. The rationale on that, from the consultant's standpoint, is really just to really be conservative on the approach and trying to figure out what is the appropriate ratios for Vista and taking the highest ratio. So taking 1.87 at that point was a guidance at that point to tell us, and from the consultant's perspective, to say, if we are covering that based on what we saw out there in terms of occupancy counts, then that should be pretty safe for us to be able to say, okay, this makes sense from that standpoint. So rather than using the average of 1.50, the decision was to use the highest number.
Okay. So going off of that, we look at the typical recommended and then we add to it, in the case of the three-bedroom, adding .6. That pulls us out of line with our surrounding communities quite substantially. And as several of the speakers said, we're creating a lot of impervious surface, we're creating open parking lots, basically, that, in my opinion, don't serve the residents of that community, they don't serve the surrounding community, and they especially don't serve an environmental and quality-of-life standpoint. And it adds costs, substantial costs, that it's not the developer paying those costs, it's the occupants of the units, it's the renters, it's the buyers. And when we're trying to attract quality developments that have amenities, landscaping, you know, meeting all the standards, those extra costs, I would rather see a development put extra costs into improved quality of life and quality of living conditions than what's really not shown by our own studies, our own parking studies, to be necessary. Now, the anecdotal evidence, and I've seen it, I think we've all seen it, is when we drive down a street by some of these complexes that are 25, 30-plus-years-old, their layout wasn't necessarily the best in terms of where they put the parking relative to the locations of the units. So what we wind up with is parking being 400, 500 feet in the back corner of the complex and street parking being 25 feet in front of their door. So that's the challenge. It's not that there's not enough parking, there's plenty of parking. It was poor architectural design on the account of the developer three decades ago that now we're trying to accommodate and address by sort of arbitrarily saying, let's take the highest parking we found, add some to it, and apply that across the board. So what we're going to wind up with is the same situation, is now the potential problem is, we're still going to mandate far more parking than's necessary in a lot of these potential developments, and they're still going to park on the street. And you're still going to get the same concerns from the community is, there's so many cars on the street, there's never a place to park on the street because there's not enough parking in the apartment complex, where the reality is, there's plenty of parking, it's just, matter of fact, is people like convenience over the parking space that's been designated open space in the back of their complex. So I think there's multiple fold to this we need to look at. One is addressing existing on-street parking concerns. I think that's a separate issue that we're going to talk about at some point in the near future that's separate from the parking standards. So we need to set that out of our minds for a minute, is that there's not a parking problem in those complexes, it's that there's a parking issue with on-street parking and how do we address resident parking within the complexes, parking management plans and the like. I look at this as an opportunity to balance the potential for economic development within the city with the potential to solve some of these parking challenges for new developments. I think we're out of line on the three-bedroom units. I think that needs to be brought more in line with Oceanside. And my question would be, is there any attempt to perhaps look at what the ratio of units were within those complexes and how they manage their parking? So for example, at Bellatera, do they have some sort of parking permit system for residents that live there? Do they assign a set number of spaces to a three-bedroom unit? Do they have three-bedroom units? To come up with a little bit more of an idea of what's actually being utilized for those types of units. I'm, again, concerned with using the highest versus the average. That seems difficult to fathom, placing on a complex that may only have 1.2 parking spaces needed per unit and we're going to require an average of 1.87 on a 200-unit complex, that's adding hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost. But in addition to that, as one of the speakers said, adding tens of thousands of square feet of pavement, which serves no purpose other than to create excess parking and potential for many problems with stormwater regulations, as the representative of the BIA said. So I would like to see us actually be more in line with what the consultant recommends for the observed actual parking needs, because this doesn't serve any scientific or factual basis. I understand, based on prior direction and comments made by the council, why these numbers are the way they are, but personally, I want to base decisions like this on factual evidence and not anecdotal comments and anecdotal opinions, if you will.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just wanted to get some thoughts from Mr. Miltonberger and Mrs. Hammond on their projects and what the change in the third-bedroom standard would mean in your projects and help us understand what it does to housing prices here in Vista, if you have some thoughts on that. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at how it would affect your projects that you're developing.
So we did run the analysis for the Vista Palomar project and if we fell under the proposed residential requirement rather than a mixed-use requirement, it would take the parking spaces, excuse me, sorry, our current requirement would be for 458 parking spaces and the proposed mixed-use, or the proposed residential requirement would be for 515 parking spaces. The implications of that are, of course, you know, trying to find room for recreation. It would be a significant loss of units and then also trying to find room for recreation, stormwater treatment, all the things that we discussed.
I'd just like to add, as far as kind of averages that we use for rent apartments, typically, we're ranging from about 1.5 to 1.75 on average, depending on the mix of one-bedrooms, twos, and threes. On for-sale, attached townhomes, condos, typically, you're ranging from about 2.25 to about 2.4 is on average. That includes the, you know, the units, direct units, parking, also the guest parking. So that's kind of the rule of thumb and that's adequate parking.
Just to follow up on that, to try and understand from staff, so I know we did the count observations, but do we have any kind of empirical evidence about the average number of automobiles that are owned by renters of three-bedroom apartments? Is that available? Is there, National Parking Association of America got something like that?
I'm sure we can inquire that from our consultant as far as more information on that, but at this time, I don't have that with me.
Okay. That would be interesting to know.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
I have to agree with Councilman Campbell in that I think I disagree. I think we're going overkill. I understand why, because you did get direction from council, from some of the council members and you're trying to please two, you know, two sides to this. But we have, you know, parking experts that are recommending these parking ratios and I think it's a mistake, as Mr. McSweeney mentioned, to try to fix past mistakes from 30 years ago. I've lived here all my life and I remember when a lot of these apartments and condo units went up. Of course, I was not paying attention to parking ratios and that sort of thing in those days. But I look at the units that are having the parking issues and I think there's more to it than just not enough space in those units. I have, like I said, I've lived here all my life, I worked here all my life, and I have, in my private practice, many clients who develop and have actually built some of these projects. And they have complained to me that people aren't using their parking spaces properly and therefore are parking on streets. I've had one guy come up to me and asked me if the apartment units across the street, if we could do anything about their people coming across and parking in front of their units on the street. So, you know, that's a whole nother subject that I think needs to be addressed at another meeting and I'd be happy to bring that up in the future. But I think moving forward, we shouldn't penalize developers and, most importantly, the new tenants that would be going into those units by having these excessive requirements. So I think we need to, we have professional consultants for a reason, we've paid them to do this. I think we need to probably listen to those individuals. I mean, that's what we paid them for, so I don't think it makes sense to pay somebody and then not listen to them. At the same time, I understand why you've come with the recommendations, but I would tend to agree with Councilman Campbell on this and we should probably start or move back to, closer to where the professionals have recommended. And one of the things that I recently heard from the BIA, and not just the BIA, but actual developers, people that want to develop in Vista, people that are developing throughout North County, is some of the concerns that have already been mentioned and that is, you know, the more parking you put in to a project, the more that needs to be compensated and, you know, with our stormwater requirements and that, it makes it almost impossible sometimes. We just had a developer come up here and say that we'd have to add, or we could be adding 65-plus parking spaces to their project, which is a lot of asphalt and a lot of runoff and that has to be compensated for. And I think the storm runoff requirements are getting much more strict in the state of California and it's not going to get any easier either. And one last point, you know, I think people do adapt and I didn't think I would ever adapt, but I do. And I recently went to an event in the Gaslamp District a couple of weeks ago and I was contemplating how I was going to get there. I was texting people, hey, going down there, you know, trying to get rides and that. So, I mean, we were talking about, you know, getting together and all in the same minivan or whatever. And I ended up actually taking a coaster down, which was actually a very pleasant experience. Took the coaster, took the trolley over, worked out great, let out, went to the trolley, back on the trolley and back up on the coaster and drove back from Oceanside, which served a couple of different purposes. So that was good. So I think we do adapt. I don't think the city of Vista is pushing people to ride bicycles. I think we're just really making it for those people that want to make, give, or take that option. We want to make it available. I am certainly not one to ride a bike to work and I'm not looking for anybody else to be required to ride a bike. And I don't really think that people are. I mean, I think it's a very small percentage. I think it's great that we are making it available for people to take that option if they'd like to or, you know, on the weekends, do their bike riding as well. So I think that's a good thing. I'm not shying away from that, but I don't think the bike will replace the vehicle, at least not now. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Aguilera that, first off, I don't think we're requiring anybody to do anything in the city and we're not forcing it on anyone, but it's important that we provide those opportunities and options for people to have the transportation mode of their choice. And that takes me to an interesting point, that by requiring more parking in residential units, we're actually putting the burden and the cost of driving across the board
units, we're actually putting the burden and the cost of driving across the board on all the units that aren't utilizing those parking spaces and are not utilizing the option of driving or having three cars or four cars. So in reality, the minimum parking standards that we're imposing are perhaps the most intrusive option that we have before us to compel people to either pay for an activity that they're not participating in, or participate in that activity of driving multiple vehicles. So I think a lot of these concerns, especially for the project that we had the speaker on that was going to increase the parking standard, or the number of spaces been nearly 65 or more, those types of projects, when evaluated based on location, are really market-driven. If parking is available, people will move into those units if they want parking. If parking is not available, and there's no on-street parking available, the market compels someone to look for a space somewhere else. So if we're going to take the approach that the market can help determine the number of parking spaces, we're definitely creating a very high threshold with the proposed standards that are going to raise costs and limit opportunities for people to have disposable income to spend downtown in our Paseo-Santa Fe area, at our restaurants, at our shops, because they're paying more for their monthly rent, because we're asking them to pay for asphalt. So that's another point that's important to consider.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comment on the multifamily parking issue is, you know, a lot of talk has been brought up about, excuse me, the apartments that are over 30 years old. Avalon is not 30 years old. The people who park in Avalon, it has been commented that they park on the street or across the street in the parking lot, in the shopping center, because it's more convenient for them. I've, I live over there, I've walked it. People are parking in the driveway of the adjacent shopping center, it's really not a place to park, but you can find five, six, seven cars parked along there. It's not more convenient for them to get to their unit, because it's a brick wall. Unless they're scaling that brick wall like Spider-Man, it's not closer to their unit for them. They're still parking back there, and they're walking around the front. Same thing with the people who are parking across the street. If they have a parking space that's inside the development, how is parking across the street at the shopping center more convenient for them to get to their unit? I haven't been able to reconcile those two. And again, when we had this conversation and the Walker contractor was here, I had some questions about how they gathered their data, they weren't able to answer those particular questions. So I still have a concern about how the car count was done back, I think it was January or February, especially when you're looking at Sunset Springs and Baratella, because when you go through those parking lots, they are full, they are maxed out, and yet Pomelo and Hacienda are impacted greatly. So there is, there is, it's not always that people are just not using the parking space that they're given, there's an issue with not enough parking. So I'm not in favor of reducing multifamily parking ratio, and I do think that we need to marry up the park, the multifamily in commercial zone, because it's multifamily, there's no commercial aspect to it. So we need to marry those two up. But my other, my other thoughts in looking at, pardon me, in looking at some of the changes in this document with athletic clubs, now I can't speak to every athletic club in town, but the ones that I've seen, their parking lots are pretty maxed out, and you're looking at taking away 13 parking spaces per thousand foot of the athletic facility. And some of them are not near trances, so if people aren't walking three and four, five miles across town to get to it, I think that's a, that's a lot to lose for that. And then my only other comment would be on the doctor's offices. We have a couple of doctor's offices in town, you're looking at taking away, I think it said 1.21 parking spaces. We already have doctor's offices, not all of them, but some, that people are parking on the street and walking up the hill or around the corner. So some of those places that you've identified reducing parking, I'm not really sure that I could go that far. So those are my only comments, and I do thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers. So where do we go from here, I guess? You don't need a motion, do you?
No, but I think we need some direction, and I think I've heard that Councilman Campbell and Councilman Aguilera agree with the Walker consultants and not necessarily with the further staff recommendations, and I think it'd be good to hear from probably Councilman Franklin, or you, Mayor, to weigh in on that, and see if there's a majority or not.
Well, as far as the consultant, if they make, if they made a mistake, then we're, then we're going to go back to the same old thing we got, you know, if they, you know, when they took the pictures, it's on Thursday night at 10 of those different places, I, you know, I'm not sure that, I mean, I guess that night it could be that way, but I, I have a trust factor, because I've been here too long, and I've seen all the old apartments, and they're all overparked, and so I have, I have the trust, this trust factor going on, that I don't trust it.
Underparked.
Underparked, yeah. What did I say, overparked? Underparked. Well, they're overparked with too many cars, how about that? Anyway, so, and I think that when multifamily goes into, like, commercial, I think that they ought to, I think they ought to follow, or when, they need to follow multifamily regulations, that's, that would be my thing, you know, right now, they, they aren't doing that, so. So I see more speakers here. How about Councilmember Franklin?
Are we, is, I'm not seeing it in the grid here, are we recommending a change to mixed-use multifamily? Or is that being?
The change as far as the mixed-use ratios, the existing residential in the mixed-use zone.
Is that in this grid?
It's, it's part of the, actually, let me show you on this slide here. It might be better, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking for it in the grid, it's not in the grid.
The second column on the slide that shows the existing mixed-use residential ratios, those would be utilized and applicable when you have a true mixed-use project that has a residential component along with a commercial being office and or retail.
Yeah.
Now, if we have purely residential apartment project in a mixed-use zone, then they would be using the column to the right, which would be the proposed ratios for attached condos for sale and rental projects falling in a mixed-use zone or in a multifamily zone.
So if you don't have the commercial component and you're strictly residential, then you fall back into the, the third?
The third column on the slide, correct.
Which is just a little bit higher than current mixed-use?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I, well, there's a couple of lines here that are, they're just slightly higher. You go from 1.5 to 1.9, from 2 to 2.15, and 2.25 to 2.75, so there's a slight increase. I mean, I think one of the problems that we have, and one of the reasons that there is so much reluctance to reduce residential parking is, is we have, we've made some mistakes, and we've got residents who are here on a regular basis with legitimate concerns about mistakes that we've made, and there's nothing we can do about those past mistakes. I'm not really ready, I mean, and I'm not really all that convinced by the methodology of the study, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I could go out on a Thursday night and snap photographs, too, but does that really reflect? What I want to look at is, I want to look at what we know is not working and what we know is working, and I'd like to, I'd, to me, that's what should set the standard, and I almost feel like we could have some more staff work involved in going out and visiting, you know, multifamily complexes, and looking at what didn't work well and what did, and I'd like to see some more photographs with some numbers paired up. I don't think that's too much to ask on this question at all. I think that would really be an excellent use of staff time, to go out and take some photographs and show us, you know, here's, here's what's working well, here's what's not, and having it. To me, I think, and a lot of us will recognize the projects, a lot of us are very familiar with the projects, and will understand, and, you know, I think that will illuminate much better than just, we observed once or twice X amount. It'll certainly help, it'll certainly help bring the numbers to life. You know, I think I'm generally supportive of moving in the direction the consultant recommended. Just, there's such a recoil, because we did park some, some new residential that were built in the mixed-use, we parked them at the mixed-use standard, it was way too low, and now we've got a perception issue to deal with. Some of our newest projects are underparked, and here we are talking about lowering the standards, and it's difficult for a lot of residents to understand, because they're going, wait a second, the standard you just used to build the project isn't working for us, and so, you know, that distinction has to be made. But am I generally supportive? Yeah, I'm generally supportive, I understand the issues, you know, with the excessive parking, and I understand the burden that it creates, and I do understand the fact that it places, you know, we, some, my colleague to my right and I have some disagreements over about how to achieve affordable housing, but, you know, certainly not overparking and creating a lot of empty spaces is a part of the equation for how we do make, you know, housing more affordable. So I would consider that, but I'd like to, at the end of the day, make a decision. First of all, I'd like to break residential out of the commercial, I just feel like this is too big of a bite of information. I really feel like if we brought back the commercial parking and the residential parking separately, it'd give us a better chance to granularize this, I would, that's what I would like to see. I agree about the, I mean, the only health club, I mean, good luck finding parking at any, you know, peak time at 24-hour gym, you know, you cannot park there. So if we built that to the current standard, and we're going to take it down seven spaces per thousand square feet, I mean, that's-
Just to clarify there.
What's that?
Just to clarify there.
Yeah.
Our current standard is not what either one of the new fitness facilities are parked at.
How did they get out of it?
So our code-
Are they parked below the current standard?
Yes.
How'd that happen?
Our code allows for applicants to request reduced parking with supporting evidence at the time they get approval of their project, so both the LA Fitness and the 24-Hour Fitness-
So what you're telling me is that if we make the amount reasonable, then we can hold people to it, is that what you're saying?
Correct, because our current code for fitness centers is very unreasonable.
Okay, so what is the, what is the 24-hour at Sycamore parked at, and what would this be in an addition or reduction from that? Because that's what I have to compare, so.
We can certainly provide that for you. I think if I remember right, it was about 2.4 spaces per thousand, and I think the code requires, what is it?
The code requires-
One for 50.
Seven.
I think it's 70. Hold on for a second.
All right, that's, the recommendation is seven. So it's currently 20 per thousand square feet?
Correct, it's one per 50 square feet, if I remember correctly.
Per 50 square feet?
Right, which just works out to 20 per thousand.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that makes sense, so we're going to hold people to that.
But we can certainly come back and revisit those particular issues, I just want to point out that the standards that you see-
Well, no, that's, that's not an unimportant point, because I would have completely agreed with my colleague here on that. So it is at 20 presently, and we, and you're suggesting reducing it by 13 to make the new number seven.
And that's a number that's supported by our consultant's count of numerous other similar facilities.
Is that your understanding? Yeah. I think I understand it.
Councilmember Franklin? I'm sorry, currently it's at one per 50.
I'm, yeah, I'm trying to work off, you're giving me metric, and I got, I got standard up here. I'm trying to work off the numbers that I'm looking at here, which are per thousand square feet, and I got into politics, I'm not too good at math, so I'm not real good at converting it on the fly. You're saying we're parked, that 24-Hour Fitness is parked at four and a half per thousand? Yeah?
Correct.
Okay, and this would take it, so this would actually increase the standard there?
Correct.
Well, I don't, that's the, that's the one that jumps out at me as clearly a problem. So if it's increasing that, then it's, it's actually an increase, then I don't have such a problem with it. And I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem reducing the parking on the mixed, on the mixed-use, as long as it's actually mixed-use, you know? But I would never support applying that mixed-use designation to the project that it was applied to. That was just a mistake that we made, and we've got to live with it. So if we can somehow avoid making a mistake like that again, then, then I guess I don't have a problem with it. So there's good reasons to do what we've observed here. I do think that a little bit of observation, we have clear examples that we all point to frequently of what works and what doesn't work, and if we could go put some, some more pictures with numbers, I, you know, we can paint my numbers with the parking problem, that might be helpful. Those are my thoughts, is that, does that give you enough thought into where I'm headed?
I think what you just said was, you're okay with the study with the exception of multifamily, the ratios that you see in there, you want some more proof, or you want some more illustrations of-
I would, I would. I mean, I, but what I'm saying is, where this bears out to be true, and maybe what I need to do is, I need to follow up with staff on this specifically, because I'd like to go over some specific projects that I'm familiar with, and I'd like to ask what the standards are there and how this specifically affected those projects, because I think that would give me, that would give me the certitude to move forth saying, yes, some reductions are warranted.
So at this point in time, right now, you're not, you're not supportive of giving staff direction based on what you have?
I'm leaning strongly in favor of giving staff direction-
But you want more time.
-to proceed with what's recommended here. So I think, I think you can convince me, if you've got, if you can help me build the empirical case, that this is the right thing to do. So I'll take the time to do that.
Okay, so then I'll go to Councilmember Campbell.
So clarify, a couple of questions I have for you is, you want more evidence to support the lowered parking ratios for multifamily?
Well, I think you yourself were saying that not often, you know, not always what we went out and counted twice doesn't necessarily tell the whole picture.
That's, no, I was actually saying that we're going off with the highest number versus the average that was actually observed, so we're doubling down on being doubly conservative on the numbers that we're using in this. So, I mean-
No, I'm agreeing with you about moving in the direction that the consultant is suggesting, isn't that what you're recommending?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm basically in agreement with that, I just, I want to see a little bit more granular level information about how this is going to, I'm not all the way there in understanding how this policy is going to look when it's applied, and this is really important, and I want to make sure that we get this right.
Perhaps, I don't know if staff could do this outside of the parking consultant, but it seems like something that perhaps we could do to do a vehicle count amongst other complexes potentially that aren't on this list, to apply a little bit broader, more comprehensive review of what's currently in place.
Well, I don't have to count the number of vehicles, I mean, photographs, if they're done correctly, should, can tell a lot of the story here.
Well, I think that's something we're trying to get away from, is the anecdotal evidence and actually look at the hard numbers, that's what I was saying is, and I think the mayor you mentioned, too, was actually looking at perhaps having a little bit more evidence to have a little bit more faith in the recommended parking count, so would that address some of those concerns, perhaps, if we had more parking counts of some other complexes that fell in line with what was already done?
I might, I guess he's someone, the old ones that are so bad, maybe they could give me what parking count on that was, and so I could say, you know.
Right, if we, if you look at the old ones where the parking standards are not where they are today, and they're parked, you're still going to have the issue with the on-street parking at a lot of these complexes. So just anecdotally, I drove through several complexes in the city, I also paid a visit to a couple of other cities that have differing parking standards in addition to own-street parking restrictions, complexes that have no guest spaces allowed, period, so parking is allowed by permit only. I visited a couple of those complexes in Orange County, observed the parking situation that that can create for own-street parking, and then also how they addressed it with the surrounding neighborhoods that are single-family home residential with restricted overnight parking standards. So I think there's a broad array of options we can talk about separately outside of the parking standards for new development for existing complexes, but it sounds like maybe we could have a broader consensus if there was a little bit more evidence-based information for the existing parking standards.
I think the staff can certainly set up a meeting with Councilman Franklin and our consultant to provide that evidence, and then depending on the outcome of that, if we need to come back to the council to make sure we have consensus, we can do that.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Campbell about maybe- I'm in agreement with Counselor Member Campbell about maybe having our staff do some more counts. You don't have to go out and count 30 apartment complexes, but can we go out and count like, you know, six more ones that are highly representative? I mean-
Absolutely.
You know, this is a big deal. This is real quality of life stuff for our residents. I can't imagine what would be worth staff time more than really understanding this problem, so.
So my belief is, is that the majority of those complexes will come back in the range of the 1.5 and below, based on what's already been done and based on my observations personally, which I'm not going to say are scientific. And that's why I think it's important to perhaps have some additional scientific-based counts that aren't necessarily done by a parking consultant, but at a specific time and a specific day, in line with the other complexes that were counted. So that perhaps that will give clarification and clarity.
I'm okay with that. So, Counselor Member Aguilera.
I can agree with that. At this point, I almost forgot what I was going to say.
Don't go to sleep.
But there was a good point that Councilman Franklin made inadvertently, actually, which was my point from previous, and that is that, you know, a lot of the problems that we're seeing out there are issues from the past. Like, I didn't know the 24-Hour Fitness, what the parking requirement was previously, and compared to what it is today and what we're looking at reducing it to is actually a higher number than what they were allowed to do. And I think that's kind of what my point was earlier, is that we're looking at some of these parking issues, and we don't even know what the underlying numbers are. Excuse me. But I did talk to Mr. Conley in the past, over the last year, I think we've talked about this, specific projects, some on like West Los Angeles. I think I also talked to the city manager about this. And there's some projects there, apartment complexes, where there's cars everywhere. You guys have no idea. I mean, there are cars, the other day I saw a car parked, you know, perpendicular into the, I mean, really bad. And I asked Mr. Conley, well, what was the parking requirements there? And there's like 90 parking spaces or something, and they've got like 300 units or something crazy. I don't know if it's that high, but it's a huge number. But you drive by there and you say, oh, we got a parking problem. Well, we do have a parking problem. The problem is that the requirements were either not enforced or just anything, you know, it was the Wild West, I guess. I mean, those are old, those are very old apartments, have been here forever. But we start looking at some of these different projects, and we don't know what caused the parking problems that we're actually seeing. And I have my own anecdotal, and since I've heard some tonight. And I've been to the Avalon, because we've heard a lot about that. And I've been there many times. I've been there on Tuesday nights after the last time it came up in maybe February or March. I was there on a Friday, I was there on Saturday, and I've taken pictures. And what I observed is, there was available parking spaces at night in front of Avalon. Yet, I do go up the street, and it is packed with cars. Now, I asked myself, why would people park up here from Avalon if there's parking in front of their apartment complex? And that just doesn't make sense. So I did, I know people that live in those, some of those condo units, and I asked, I said, you know, what was the parking like before Avalon? Always a parking problem. People always parking on the street. So I think that we are looking at a parking problem that's existed for a long time, and I certainly don't want to add to that, but I don't think we should be making decisions based on past mistakes and trying to fix that with our parking standards that we're looking at approving here. So I just caution you to think about that. And I think it's a good idea to have staff go out and look at a couple of these projects and just if, that's going to make you guys more comfortable with that. I'm okay with that. I'm comfortable with where we're at right now as far as the recommendation, but if we need to get a little bit more information to get the rest of council on board, then I support more information.
And you just kind of made the point that I was trying to make it. You know, what are the parking, what were the requirements on that street? So what makes, what makes it so bad right now? I mean, I don't want to make a decision, come down on parking requirements and make a decision that, oh, back then it was like that, you know. It's, I don't have enough information, I think, on the older units, that what made them so bad? What were the parking requirements? Or like you said, over in Los Angeles. I mean, what were the parking requirements back then? And maybe that would help me to determine if, yeah, we've come down on them and that's going to be okay. Because right now I worry, because, you know, I worry about lowering any. So, anyway, that's that. So, oh, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not to put too fine a point on it, Ms. Chow, but when we're talking about the draft parking requirements, all I have to go on is what was in our agenda report, which is the graph you gave us, that was put together by Walker Consulting, and it talked about the athletic and health clubs. And it says quite clearly the net change would be minus 13, leaving seven spaces per the 1,000-foot area that you talk about. So if, when you come back with further information, it would be, I would be curious to know, what was the parking difference between when LA Fitness was built versus 24-Hour Fitness, perhaps, if they were different requirements? Because I didn't quite understand your comments to Councilman Franklin about the parking requirements for 24-Hour Fitness. And it says quite clearly in this document in front of me that it's a reduction of 13 spaces per 1,000 square foot. So I just would like to get some clarification on that. And then, just to reiterate what I said earlier, Avalon wasn't built 30 years ago. And I agree with what Councilman Franklin had said, that there's an issue there that needs to be looked at. And before we go and just wipe the slate and make all these changes, yes, there were some issues with apartment complexes built 30 years ago, but we have a really big issue with a complex that was only put up two years ago. So I wouldn't want to just put a broad brush across that one. So I agree if we come back with more information and more answers, then perhaps revisit this again. But thank you.
I don't see any more buttons pushed, so I think we can, maybe we can move on. But I want, I want our city manager to talk about our public hearings, because I think they can't go beyond 10 o'clock, and it's 9:12.
Correct, Mayor. So I believe we're done with D4, and we have our staff direction. Moving on, we have two more discussion items. However, we do have an ordinance that states that all public testimony on public hearings needs to occur by 10 o'clock unless there is a vote taken, so I wanted to mention to the council. Do you want to take the public hearings now, or would you prefer to continue with the discussion items?
I would say we can take the public hearing now, but I'd like to make a motion now that we extend the meeting, if necessary, to accommodate the full agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we have, do we need a vote on it? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. I think we should have snacks up here. My stomach's, my stomach's been growling for an hour. No, I don't take a break, because there's no, there's no food in sight, so I must keep going here. Okay, so, we're going to open public hearing number one on Nuovo Vista Apartments. It's a continued item. This is a continued public hearing to consider an appeal of the planning case number 24-029, the Nuovo Vista condominium project. And the public hearing is now opened, and Director Conley will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision regarding a mitigated negative declaration, a site development plan, a tentative subdivision map, and condominium housing permit for a project at 1248 South Santa Fe, submitted by Brandywine Homes. The project site is located on the east side of South Santa Fe, shown on the overhead. It's about 1,000 feet north of Marvesta Drive, consists of about 1.92 acres, is currently a vacant parcel surrounded by commercial and single-family residential development. As I mentioned, located at 1248 South Santa Fe. This is a close-up of the property. You can see it's vacant and undeveloped, with the exception of a driveway that shares access to the commercial center directly to the southeast of the project. There's also a number of single-family homes up the slope to the east of the site, as well as commercial, retail, and auto-oriented uses to the north and west. A little history on the project. The Planning Commission approved a 35-unit apartment project on this site in December of 2014. Was a site development plan with a density bonus that provided for four affordable units on the site and included a tentative subdivision map and condo permit. The city council appealed the project, and in January of 2015, discussed the project and provided direction to the applicant to come back with some revisions to the project, focusing on type of product, density, parking, traffic, architecture, et cetera. The city council then discussed the project on August of last year with a revised proposal from the applicant with a 22-unit condominium project, and the council provided general support for the changed application, directed staff to continue working with the applicant to bring it back to a public hearing. And so here we are. The land use designation is mixed use, and the general plan, it allows for residential or commercial. The zoning is mixed use 15, which means it has a maximum density of 15 units to the acre. Both the existing general plan and zoning allow for multifamily development at a zoning, at a density, excuse me, of 15 units to the acre. This is the revised site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Excuse me. Shows an arrangement of attached condominium buildings, townhome-style units that would be separate units that would share walls. There are two six-unit buildings, two four-unit buildings, and one two-unit building for a total of 22 units. The parking would be provided onsite in the form of two-car garages for each individual unit, with an additional 15 spaces for guests and one handicap space included in that 15. So a total of 60 spaces, I believe, overall. The product type is 22-4-sill condo units, which would include 14 three-bedroom and eight four-bedroom units, so larger-sized units than what were proposed before in the 35-apartment unit project. The density is below, the maximum density of 15 units to the acre comes in at 11.5 dwelling units per acre under the current proposal. And as I mentioned, they provide 60 spaces onsite, which is a total of 2.73 spaces per unit, which meets our current citywide standards. The architecture for the six-unit building is shown here. This is the revised design that shows a concrete tile roof, stucco facade, some metal-seamed roofs along the interior facade, as well as wrought iron railings and shutters for a decorative look. All the two-car garages for each unit are shown on the back of the elevation, as shown below. And the site plan at the bottom shows where these six-plex units would be located. This is the four-plex unit, there would be two of those, and one two-story, two-plex unit, which would be located in the rear of the property closest to the single-family homes. Note that the majority of the units would be three stories, but there would be one two-story unit that would be tucked in the corner of the property. These are color schemes, which are depicted in the colored elevations, which are provided to you, generally earth-toned colors with concrete tile roofs and stone facade. This is a street view that was provided by the architect for the applicant, showing what the view would be from South Santa Fe Avenue, sides of the building facing the street. And again, this is the site plan. No other staff information. The applicant's here, is going to make their own presentation whenever the council's ready. I'm happy to answer any questions in the interim. Thank you.
Okay, I have one speaker. Would like to hear from the applicant first.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate the opportunity. Mark Whitehead with Brandywine Homes, 16580 Aston in Irvine. We came here, you know, as Mr. Conley presented, and originally had an apartment project, got a planning commission unanimous favor, went to the city council, listened to what the direction from the council was, took that back in, got with our team, as we discussed in last August, brought in a new consultant to start with the architecture all over, site plan, and kind of incorporate with what you guys had mentioned before. Our architect is here as well, if there's any questions that you have to ask of us. But we opportunity, or we appreciate the opportunity to be back here again and hopefully get across the finish line. And want to thank staff for working diligently with us to get us to this position. We're here for any questions or comments you have. We do have a presentation, but Mr. Conley pretty much kind of took basically what we had already, so it's kind of, it would basically be redundant. So, I don't know if you want us to do it or not, so.
Okay, I think, okay. Counselor Aguilera has a question.
Not really a question. I've seen the presentation, or, I mean, we've been working with you, and I really appreciate the changes you've made in listening to the people of Vista, listening to council members, planning commission staff, in making the adjustments. I'm very pleased with the project.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I would say that also, because I appreciate that you changed from apartments to condos, so that was really important, and I think, I think that looks good, so. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to say thank you. As you know, I'm the one who appealed it from the Planning Commission to the city council, because I had some issues with the project the way it was originally presented. And you really took to heart what I said and what my colleagues had to say, and you brought back something different. And I appreciate that very much. It's still three stories, which is a story higher than I would be comfortable with, but there's nothing I can do about that, because it's, you technically kept a code, right? And I appreciate that, and I understand that. But I just want to say thank you for, I think you made all the changes that we recommended, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Campbell.
As you may be aware, I'm going to differ on my comments. I know you did what the majority of the council asked for, but I want to point out that your original project application was my preferred option. It was, it met the code, it met all the legal criteria. And personally, I believe it was an unlawful appeal of the project. It met the density bonus requirement, which, as state law, requires us to actually support. So that's my concern, but I appreciate that you didn't take action against the city on that, to pursue your original project. And your project does look like a nice project, so it'll fit well within the community. So thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
If you don't have any more questions of him, then I'll ask for our speaker. Okay, so if they have any more questions, then we'll call you back up. Okay, Georgia Poshen.
Thank you, Georgia Poshen, 1324 Cypress Drive. My only question is, has there been adequate studies done on air quality in that particular area? Based on the, if I could get that first graphic up that shows the Google shot from the top In that, the way the project is set up, it would be probably under 50 yards away from a major paint and body shop with paint stalls and exterior funneling of chemical and paint fumes, along, in conjunction with that whole block, which is an automotive service area, that the air quality would be trapped behind the proposed building, because there's a, and I don't have the exact footage, but I would guess at least 25-foot pitch up higher. So conceivably, the airflow from the automotive center, including the paint shop, would be trapped in that quadrant, and could be a harmful air quality issue. I'm just wondering if there had been any studies done on potential problems along those lines. That's it.
Thank you, sir. So the, I guess we can close, I've got more speakers. Okay, Counselor Campbell. Oh, no, these are, I didn't, okay. Oh, Deputy Mayor Rigby, did you-
I was just going to move that we closed the public hearing and we adopt the project as presented.
Motion on a second on that? Please cast your votes. Motion passes with one abstention. Okay, so moving on to our second public hearing, which is public hearing number two, tax exempt bond financing for the Cedar Nettleton Apartments. This is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing for Cedar Nettleton Apartments, and the public hearing is now open, and Director Meyer will introduce this item. Well, we haven't heard from you tonight. You're still awake back there. You're still awake back there.
Thank you, Mayor. A member of the council with us this evening is Amanda Lee, and she'll be presenting the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Community Housing Works is seeking a tax-exempt bonds for acquisition, rehabilitation, and improvement of a 68-unit affordable rental housing facility located at 245 Cedar Road and 160 Nettleton Road, generally known as Cedar-Nettleton Apartments. The bonds are issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority and are secured by the property. Repayment is the obligation of Community Housing Works, with no obligation or liability to the city. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to comment on the application of taxes and financing. This concludes staff's report. Mr. Meyer and I are available for questions.
Okay, do I have any speakers on this?
No, you don't.
Okay, I have no speakers on this, so, Councilor Aguilera.
Yeah.
Did I forget to put, are they, are they new, right?
They're new, yeah.
Okay.
No, I was just going to say, since we don't have anybody from the public here to comment or speak on the subject, I make a motion that we close the public hearing and adopt the recommendation.
Move second, Deputy Mayor Rigby. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, flip them back, discussion items. So we're going back to number D5, Central Vista Business Improvement District update. And let's see. Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development, and with me is Michael Luna, our Economic Development Specialist, and he'll be giving the report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In June 2015, the City Council approved a contract with the Vista Village Business Association, the VVBA, to administer the Central Vista Business Improvement District. At this time, the City Council requested regular updates from the VVBA on the status of the administration of the CVBID work plan. This report covers activities from January through March 2016. The city is in receipt of the third quarter CVBID work plan update, which has been approved by the CVBID Advisory Board on May 13, 2016. The work plan update details VVBA activities for both CVBID-funded items and those activities funded by VVBA revenues. Status updates on the progress of each activity are included as well. City staff continues to work with the VVBA to ensure proper reporting and compliance with the administration agreement. Kevin Hamm and I are available to answer any questions following the presentation. Now, at this time, I would like to introduce Don Heine, President of the Vista Village Business Association, who will present the work plan report.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you. Good evening, council. How are you? I am Don Heine. I'm the owner of Little Cakes Cupcake Kitchen, as well as the President of the Vista Village Business Association.
I wish we would have brought some cupcakes tonight.
I know. There's some in my car.
Don't quit now, huh?
I'll just give you that. Okay, thank you so much. So we've got some newly-elected board members. We've got Tiffany Crabtree, owner of Contrived to Charm. She's also currently co-chairing our VVMM, we're calling it the Vista Vintage and Makers' Market. We also have Andrew Lowen, the owner of California Web Options. He's also donating some of his time. He's matching his time for pay with redesign of the VVBA.org website, which we're really excited about. We're also welcoming back Janice Clifane, who's got over 10 years of volunteer time with the VVBA, so we're excited to have her back. Here is our continuing Board of Directors, and as you can see, we are now at 12 members, so we're still at over 80% of our Board of Directors being bid members currently, so we're still very excited about that. We're off to a good start. This new event that we have created, the Vista Vintage and Makers' Market, it's potentially a recurring event that might end up going quarterly. We're trying out a few different options of it. The first one is, is coming out in October, and then we're doing another iteration of it during Winterfest, and then trying another faction of it during the unforgettable event in March. So we're trying a few different options of it, but we're really excited about what it could mean for the city. We were interested in sort of speaking to the new demographic. We've got all these new businesses and new customers in the historic downtown, Flying Pig, Contrived to Charm, Standards, Metaphor, Belching Beaver, and this market will appeal directly to that demographic, which we feel has been being missed lately. Here is our financial recap. Revenue of $139, expenses of $113. We are still operating with a net of $25,000, and we do have some revenue that we expect to be coming in between Taste of Vista and Rod Run. Before the end of the fiscal year, there's typically Rod Run revenue that comes in as well. And we're also speaking, seeking sponsorships for a lot of our events, which should help us with revenue as well. Our third Annual Health and Safety Day was in February. We had a returning title sponsor, the Vista Community Clinic came back again, and we had more vendors, more activities, more fun. We had an appearance on Good Day San Diego that helped get the word out. Our post-meeting on this actually led to discussions with the owner of Children's Paradise, Julie Lowen, who's very excited to help make a lot of connections for us throughout the educational community to help grow the event. In 2017, she's very excited about what she can bring to the table, and then we're in discussions to add one of our fundraisers to this event also in 2017. So already starting to think about fundraising. Also preparing for next fiscal year, we've got our Rod Run Event Manager signed our contract in January for our August event, so we're already underway with that event. We also have a Taste of Vista Event Manager signed, preparation is underway for that event in June. We are working with Legendary Event Management, and we're actually very excited about our relationship with them. We are getting involved with the Vista BBQ Classic again in July, and we've actually just figured out a way to have that be a revenue generator for us. So not only having our name connected to the event again, but also sharing in some revenue generating with Legendary. The Vista Vintage and Makers' Market, we've been cultivating that since January, and we do have a date for that in October. And Winterfest 2016 planning has been underway. We're going to get our event, we have our event manager signed, and we are very excited about the multi-level aspect of that event. We're also going to start looking at some underutilized areas, such as the Creek Walk, which we have the picture here. We're looking to try and expand into the Creek Walk. Broadway is where the VVMM will be, and trying to figure out events that we can do along Paseo, Santa Fe as well, to try and make sure we're reaching into every different aspect of the bid. Making good on promises, we did do our St. Pat's Day Parade and Festival in March. There was a strong turnout, very vocal community support for this event, leading up to it. It was an event that we had on our work plan for the entire fiscal year, and the Celtic Queen pageant, leading up to this event, made, made us make sure that we were going to hold up with this commitment. It did prove to be a learning experience for me personally, and I think that we're going to be able to make sure to be a little more effective with that event next year if we do end up slating it. So all in all, a good learning experience, and there was a lot of positive feedback from the community as well. So our new year brings us some new opportunities. Again, working with legendary events, we're collaborating with them on our Vista Vintage and Makers' Market. They're assisting our team, putting that together. We're working with them on the Vista BBQ Classic, and again, turning that into some, some revenue generating, and working with them on Winterfest. And then they are doing an unforgettable event in March, and we may tie a fundraiser together with that event, but also working in conjunction with them on that event in March. The fundraisers that were being reviewed, Mini Golf for Good is something that Jeffrey Frankel brings with him that is kind of an exciting and fun thing for families to do, where businesses get to create a hole of mini golf, and then you have, and you know, like, if it's a plumber, they have plumbing in place, and I might have a big cupcake that you hit through. So everyone gets to kind of develop their own hole, and it actually ends up being a great revenue generator and fun family event. Archery Tag, there's a place called Upshot Archery we worked with on a couple different events as a, as a vendor, and we're interested in doing an archery tag fundraiser, possibly during Health and Safety Day, because what, what speaks to health and safety more than bows and arrows? But it'll work, it'll work. And then also potentially a gala casino night with hopes to utilize the Civic Center Community Room, which Michael Luna just kind of gave us a tour and actually showed us that we could potentially use that for very little to no cost, so we're excited to reach out into that untapped resource as well. I think that that's kind of the key for next fiscal year, is looking at our untapped resources, grant-writing, fundraising, being a 501(c)(3), and making sure that we are making good on all those untapped resources. And in regards to our organization being awarded the RFP, the RFP for the CVBID funds, as well as the city grant, I would just like to say thank you for your continued trust in our organization, and it will be my goal to make sure that each and every one of you feel that this is money well-spent, and thank you for your time.
Good luck in your continued success. You're doing a great job down there.
Thank you.
Do we need, what? Oh, any, oh, sorry, any questions? Must be, I'm sleeping over here. Okay, but I don't see any questions, and I, you don't need a motion or anything, it's just to see the report. So the report is received, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for staying.
Thank you.
The next thing is D6, which is a contract agreement with New City America. Director Hamm will introduce this item.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. The City Council directed staff to solicit proposals for a new contractor to administer the CVBID. An RFP was issued in February, and three proposals were received. The proposals were from the Vista Chamber of Commerce, the Vista Village Business Association, and a combined proposal from the VVBA and New City America. All three organizations were interviewed. The interview panel consisted of Councilmember John Franklin, CVBID Advisory Board Member Tom Fleming, downtown expert Peter Norby, and myself. The interview panel's evaluation was unanimous in its analysis that the combined submittal by the VVBA and New City America was the best proposal. However, the committee was concerned that the VVBA's recent successes would be lost without sufficient revenues, so it was recommended to separate the two, the two agreements and create, the one agreement and create two. That would essentially save $30,000 that we could use for the New City America agreement to create a community benefit assessment district for $30,000, and then provide $30,000 to the VVBA for their agreement. Community benefit districts are property assessment districts aimed at sustaining and improving commercial districts. They are enacted through local ordinances by way of the state constitution that allows for the establishment of this type of special benefit district for charter cities. Much like property-based improvement districts that are assessed on property owners, community benefit districts are a voluntary assessment funding mechanism specifically for property owners to create improvements within a specific area. Community benefit assessment districts can also include residential property owners in the effort. Improvements can include enhanced street and sidewalk cleaning, expedited graffiti removal, public space development and maintenance, parking improvements, and street furniture. It should be noted that property-based assessment districts are different from the current business improvement district that the city currently has in the downtown. A community benefit district assesses property owners and bids assessed business owners. The improvements or benefits of a CBD are typically different due to the nature of the party being assessed. So for example, a property owner is assessed in a community benefit district, whereas in a business improvement district, the business is assessed in the district. Community benefit districts can exist without or in tandem with a business improvement district. During Phase One, New City America would create a steering committee for downtown businesses and property owners in order to conduct outreach and obtain feedback on the feasibility of creating a CBD. The feasibility analysis during this phase would include improvement options and district boundaries. The analysis will be undertaken and submitted to the city and the CBD Steering Committee for review. If the survey results supported the creation of the CBD, then city staff will turn to the City Council for approval of the community benefit district assessment. If it is determined that there is not enough support for a CBD, all efforts will cease and New City America will not move forward to Phase Two. If the concept of a CBD provides feasible and the businesses are supportive of it, we will move on to Phase Two. During this phase, we'll publish the survey results, send out property verification forms to all property owners. New City America will create a draft preliminary downtown management plan, which includes the cost per property owner, a list of the special benefits, the benefit zones, the frequency of services, boundaries, and management of a newly-formed Downtown Vista Property Owners' Association. New City America will then finalize the community benefit assessment district, district plan, obtain approval from the downtown steering committee, and have the plan reviewed by city staff. Phase Two concludes with ballots being sent to all the property owners, a tallying of the results, and a public hearing before 10:00 PM if the district will be established. The $30,000 needed for Phase One is available in the Economic Development 1617 budget, and if Phase Two is supported by property owners, the remaining $40,000 would be requested later this year. Staff recommends adopting the attached resolution approving an agreement for the investigation and establishment of a community benefit assessment district for Downtown Vista with New City America. This concludes my report. I must say that Mr. Lamandry had to leave because he has to be up in San Francisco for a similar presentation early tomorrow morning, so he said he was sorry that he had to leave, but I'll be able to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any questions from the council? If I don't have any, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hamm, you commented that the difference between the community benefit district versus the bid is that one assesses the property owner and one assesses the business.
Correct.
And we are not looking to do away with the bid, we just want to create this on top of the bid, am I correct?
When we go through the process, that's one of the things that we can look at. In some areas, they do do away with the bid, in other areas, they keep it. So for example, in downtown San Diego, they have both the property-based and the business-based improvement districts.
When this was brought up, was there a particular way it was brought up to go, in tandem or in lieu of?
I think most of the discussions we've had over the years that they'd be in tandem.
I did see somewhere in one of the agenda reports regarding the VVBA and the bid, was that it was an additional funding mechanism that they were looking for. So my question is, if you're going to be assessing the property owner and you're assessing the business owner, you're, you're taxing twice for the same service, so they're not going to get a second bench in front of their business, or a second tree, or another string of lights. I'm, I'm not sure what additional benefit it would be, aside from an additional funding mechanism to do what the VVBA is already doing. And it says here in the, the agenda report, the benefits of a community benefit district would be facilitate increased sales by developing a more vibrant and attractive environment, which is what the VVBA is already doing, supports businesses in the area through commercial recruitment, retention, and promotion, again, already being done, can fund projects such as cleanup programs, decorations, parks, special events, can be created for a longer period of time than street and highway code bids, it can include residential and mixed-use areas. So a lot of these... as cleanup programs, decorations, parks, special events, can be created for a longer period of time than street and highway code bids, it can include residential and mixed-use areas. So a lot of these, pretty much all of these, that talk about a tangible thing that this new tax will do, is already being done by the VVBA and with bid funding. So I'm not sure what the additional benefit is. Citywide, we already remove graffiti, usually within 48 hours, and then that's on the outside. We are really good at removing it. So I don't know if you're, if you're a business owner and a property owner, if you're getting taxed twice, does you get graffiti removed sooner? I didn't understand what that comment was, that you get expedited removal of graffiti. So I'm actually not in favor of this. And I do have questions for the VVBA because the agenda report for the previous agenda, or maybe it's just comments, when you were giving your report for your quarterly, some of the monies that you have listed here for the promotions and the special events, you have six different events listed here, Health and Safety Day, St. Patrick's Day Parade, Taste of Vista Rod Run Fall Event, and Winter Fest. The actual income versus your actual expenses, you lost money on some of these events. And that's not as concerning to me, although it's a repeated thing through the years. And you know, and you talked about it in your letter to us, that there has been a history of, the VVBA has been floundering for the last few years. It has not been a very strong organization. And I appreciate that you recognize that and you brought that up. But more concerning for me was, pardon me, I'm sorry about my voice is going.
It's okay.
Was that the estimated income versus the actual income was so vast and different for some of these events. We're talking almost $8,000 difference between what was anticipated versus what was brought in. And these are events that, none of them were first-time events. These are events that have been ongoing over the years. And so it seemed to me that there should be a little bit more history, a little bit more knowledge of the event, the date, the time, the weather, whatever, to get a little bit more closely aligned estimate versus actual, both on income and expense. So I know you're the new president, and I know that you're the new executive director. And that was my reason for an abstention vote instead of an outright no vote, was because I didn't want to give you an absolute no vote. But because of the history, it's not gotten any better. In fact, I've seen it just getting worse. I couldn't come right out and say, yes, I agree with the VVBA getting that contract again. So looking at this particular proposal of adding a second tax to the people in that area to do the same things that the VVBA is already doing, I'm not in favor of. But it also taxes residents in the area. And we hear some complaints from residents that some of the events that go on actually affect them not in the most positive way with the traffic and the noise. So I'm wondering, as a resident in that area, would I want to be taxed to pay for an event that does nothing but cause me problems? I'm thinking not everybody would go down that road. So I still have a lot of concerns about doing something like this, and I'm not in favor of it at all at this point. But I do want to say to you and to your new executive director, good luck. And I look forward to seeing what you do with what you have.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you want me to address some of the differences between the community benefit assessment district and a business improvement district?
More than what you said about just between a business and a resident, and that what they would do would be more than what's in our agenda report?
Well, the differences are that with the business-based assessment district, those benefits derived from that assessment have to go to pay for benefits for those businesses within those specific zones. With regard to the property-based business improvement district, or what we're calling a CBD here because we're a charter city, those benefits would go to the improvements that would be of direct value to the businesses. So if a businessperson owned a piece of property and also owned a business there, they would be assessed twice. But many times, the business in a location is not the property owner. So the property owner would be assessed and the business would be assessed. The benefits that typically are derived with the city monies that go to the VVBA for the CVBID are paying for activities that promote the downtown or support activities in the downtown. When we're talking about some of the items they've done, like the cleanup in the downtown, they've kind of done that by hook or crook, by using some of the money that they have outside of city monies to make some of those improvements. And so that's why we've talked about some of these assessments since in the past, is that it will give them some of those monies, or the city some of those monies, to make some of those improvements that we need in the downtown that would benefit the property owners other than by getting the money by hook or crook or different ways.
And also, just to speak on behalf of the events, one of the major events that we did have an issue with was St. Pat's. And it is something that we've had a lot of discussion about and that our executive director now, who has 24 years of experience, stepped into days before the event was going to happen and has given us a wealth of advice on. And one of the things that I think we've had issues with in the past is that we haven't had the funding available to have an executive director that really can stand up to the multitude of tasks that we're asking for them to do. We got Jeffrey at a bit of a bargain as an interim ED. And you know, one of the things that the CBD, should it come to fruition, will help us with is to potentially keep funding an executive director that will ideally keep us on task, make sure that we are more fiscally responsible. And should members of the board rotate through, which we've had a lot longer term of board members now, but you know, if you do have board turnover, but you have a strong ED that's in place, it's our belief that they'll be able to help make sure that we are fiscally responsible and that we're also, like I said, reaching out to the other venues, grant writing, fundraising, a lot of the things that the VVBA hasn't been doing in the past. So it's all part of the plan moving forward. And ideally, honestly, we were concerning whether or not we were going to do a St. Patrick's Day event, but we said we had made the promise at the beginning of the fiscal year, the VVBA had done it. And the Celtic Queen Pageant, which happens, is sort of a lead-up in the parade, is almost another addition to that event. And so we felt that with so many strong members of the community, the Flarities and everyone putting on the Celtic Queen Parade, or Celtic Queen Pageant, that had we not done the parade, it would have been worse. So it was sort of the lesser of two evils. What do we do? Do we do a parade that will potentially lose money? Or do we cut an event that already had a lead-up with some other strong support? So as you know, these are the kinds of decisions that you end up making sometime and can't make anyone happy.
Well, I appreciate that. But I'm looking at the graph that you gave us, and again, all we have to go on is what's in our agenda packet that's given to us to read.
Right.
So if you all have other information that hasn't been shared with us, I don't know it. But when I'm looking at this graph that you sent, four out of your six events lost money, some of them just a little bit, and some of them significant amounts.
Right. Well, I mean, some of them are built as goodwill events, but...
St. Patrick's Day Parade is what I'm saying. So, and I understand that the need for an executive director is going to be strong because in my three and a half years on the city council, you're on the fourth executive director. You're the third president. And there's been enormous turnover on the board of directors. So they're still not settled. It's still, you haven't found your footing yet. And I really hope that you do, especially now that you're the new president and you're the new executive director. And you have some good ideas here in what your proposal said. But I think the monies that you're looking for, that you identify for more street improvements and more furniture and more lights or whatever, and more money for an executive director, are going to come because of the profitability of your organization. It should not come because of a tax that you impose. It should come because of the profitability. That's my point. So, thank you.
And just to, also just let you know, Lev Gershwin, who was here earlier, who is a property owner in Vista, said something before meeting with Marco. He said something at a meeting where he said, "I don't know if now's the right time for a CBD in Vista." Then he went and met with Marco, he came back, and now he's fully in support of it and actually helped lead us to putting in a joint RFP proposal. So I wish Marco could have been here because he does, I've heard him speak and walked away nodding in approval of what it is he offers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I will, I would just jump in and I would just tell you that events, because I was part of the Main Street for many years. And so a lot of times, events are to bring people together. Downtown is the window to your city. And so sometimes, events are to bring the community together, and they don't always make money. They're a thing that feels good to the people and it's going on. And so they don't always make, they aren't always there to make money. They're for other purposes also. So I would just kind of say that in their defense. And I will, I'll support this because I think it should be up to the people. It should be the businesses, up to them to make the decision on this. I'm not going to make the decision whether they want to put that in or not, but I think that the people should have a choice to do that. So that's my two cents, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item or move it forward, whatever we need to do to make this option available to the businesses to choose if they want to do it or not. I think that's ultimately up to the downtown property owners to decide. And as you said earlier, there are some that are business owners and property owners, but some that are business owners that are not property owners. And the flexibility that this would allow for downtown improvements in conjunction with what the VVBA is doing will help downtown grow and succeed and ultimately allow the VVBA to become more profitable through their events that they're doing and other activities. So this is, I think, a good way to help push that forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Franklin.
So, and it's been a few weeks since I was in this meeting, but I had kind of thought that this was going to be ultimately a replacement for the bid as a revenue mechanism. Because what we had discussed was New City America actually winning the contract to the exclusion of VVBA, which was supported by VVBA. In fact, VVBA offered its presentation as a, in case you don't choose New City America, which we're really excited about, we're offering ourselves to continue to operate it, which was a good idea. And what we, what came out of that, my recollection of it, was that we looked at spending the money that we would have given VVBA for the next year's operations. We looked at spending that money with New City America to go through this process. That functionally would have meant that the VVBA's operations would have come to a halt while we were in the interim process, okay? It would have been a end the VVBA in favor, pushing all of our chips into the, you know, taking a look at what our other options would be with this CVBID. Because that was Marco's proposal. Marco Lamandry with New City America did not come with a proposal to administer the bid and run the VVBA, or, you know, take the place of the VVBA. He said, "Look, here's what you should do. You should do the CBD. That's what I'm proposing. I didn't come with a different proposal because that's the one you should take." And Marco is extremely, if he could have presented, he is extremely persuasive and he's a very, you know, dynamic kind of a guy. One of the ideas that came out of it, I don't remember if it was my suggestion or not, but I remember thinking it was a good idea, was, and I said to, I think I said to Kevin, did I say this to you? Patrick should just use his discretionary authority, and I'm glad that this brought before the council, but just go ahead and do the inquiry and not take the funding away from VVBA so that it hits a brick wall, but let's dual-track these ideas. But I would agree with the deputy mayor, I'm not excited about, I am not excited about the idea of both funding mechanisms. A lot of businesses pay triple net leases, meaning, and whether you pay triple net lease or not, you're still paying the property taxes. If you're paying the rent, ultimately, when your lease comes up, you're going to pay the bump up because the property owner's going to tax more. Ultimately, the businesses, the tenant always is going to be the one to pay this. The problem, real problem, and this is significant, Kevin identified this to me two years ago or whenever I joined the council, we haven't raised the bid in seven-plus years. Now, maybe it's been eight. So the purchasing power of the VVBA, their ability to continue to employ an executive-level person, has diminished in very real, you know, very meaningful way because they've had no increase in their budget. So what I think that we should see here is an option to replace the revenue stream for VVBA entirely through the CBD. The reason that I like it as a replacement is the city council does not have to vote to increase the bid fee periodically. As property values go up and assessed valuations increase, and there's turnover and Prop 13 is reset when people sell, there will be an automatic process for increases in the funding that the city council does not have to readjust. This would provide a permanent, ongoing mechanism that is, I think, the right way to head. And it also gives business owners, through their representatives, you know, through their landlords, it gives them the opportunity to decide whether we should, whether we should continue the VVBA's operations, which, I want to join, I didn't take the time because it's been such a long meeting, but I just want to join in saying some really positive things. I've said them before, things are really on the right track right now, and you and the VVBA are really due a lot of credit for that. Things are going in the right direction. And I, what the mayor said is not lost on me. The events, whether they make money or lose money, you know, I came to the St. Patrick's Day event, wasn't that well-attended, but I spent money at the businesses downtown while I was there. And that's the whole idea of your events, is to get people to spend money. If you make a little bit on it, that's all the better because you can do another event. But every time you do an event, you bring people and their dollars into downtown, and that's the real, and that's a tangible benefit. If I'm a business owner and you're bringing people, you know, to the front of my business and they come in and spend money, I know I got something for my bid fee. So I'm not, I'm not certain, we need to look at the revenue estimates. I don't want to create a half-million-dollar organization here, but I would like to see the VVBA or the combination of VVBA as a sub-entity of New City America or vice versa, however we structure it. The good news is, this is a partnership here, and Don and the VVBA board are really excited about this. They brought this to us in connection with Mr. Ham. All that said, I think it's a good, it's a good idea to explore and find out whether there's interest in increasing what's being done to help our downtown businesses. They can accept it, they can reject it. If they reject it, they can keep the status quo, which we have some renewed life in. It's great. We can get a sense of direction and move forward. But I do think we should consider making it a replacement, not a, not an addition. But that's part of, what we need the analysis to do is to tell us what the revenue numbers are. So that's, and I would, if there hasn't been a second, then I would second Councilmember Campbell's motion.
And just to speak on Councilman Franklin's comments, the original RFP that we proposed, we were actually saying that the VVBA would run concurrently on a grassroots shoestring budget of approximately $20,000. We said the VVBA would do whatever it needed to do should the CBD not come to fruition. We would ideally then receive that money back to keep going if they walk away in November because the CBD isn't there. That's how much we believe in the New City America proposal. And now, what was basically effectively brought to us was this, an option to come back with an increased budget, but still less than what would have been typically awarded based on the full RFP amount. We're only getting a 30K grant from the city. And the board is unanimously pleased with losing 30K essentially from our budget to go towards this CBD. And again, the, our board consists of business owners, at least 80%, who are in the bid, who are paying bid fees, who are saying, yes, let's lose money from the budget now to effectively try and see if a CBD comes to fruition. So if that just lets you know where some of the business owners in the bid stand, that was our support of New City America.
Okay. Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the questions I did have, I'm sorry I didn't ask, is in Exhibit A, would they go through the different stages and phases of what they're going to do? In this, page nine, excuse me, of the exhibit, it says that it will initiate a petition drive of support among the weighted property owners to trigger the ballot and need a recommended minimum of 30% of the weighted vote. Can you please reiterate or explain weighted, how that's going to be determined?
Sure. It's based to... Sure, it's based upon the square footage of the property itself. So, you know, 100,000 square feet would have twice the amount of vote of someone that's 50,000 square feet.
Do we know the ratio of businesses that fit into that category that would be in your proposed geographic region?
Well, roughly, we're looking at the similar footprint to what we have. So, some of the bigger partners that we'd need to talk to are DDR. DDR would be someone that would be important, and we're reaching out to and having a conversation with them. So, the larger property owners would be ones that we really need to get into the fold. We may decide with DDR if DDR doesn't want to participate, because they already have a CAM fee, and they already have some things that they're doing with their businesses there, and Don could speak to that. Being someone that's in that complex, I think he'd like to be part of it, but if DDR decides not to be part of it, that's something that we could cut out of it and really work around it, and they could do their own activity.
I was just curious to know how many businesses fit in the larger area footprint...
Within the bid right now, it's about 260.
Versus the smaller businesses?
Well, there's about 260 businesses total. With regard to square footage, I don't have that number off the top of my head. Probably the single largest within this area is going to be Lowe's.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no more speakers, so I'm guessing, do we cash our votes?
Yep.
Kathy, you sleeping down there? Okay. Just for a few minutes more. That motion passes with one no vote. Okay, so with that, we have, we'll go to Oral Communications, and we have one speaker, Alejandro Sanchez. Everybody see him? Okay, Alejandro Sanchez, you remember him? Yeah. Okay, so with that, I will go to remarks, and I'm going to do my comments quickly here. The Wave Water Park opens on Saturday, May 28th, and on Sunday, we have the Strawberry Festival that takes place downtown, so you can drop by the city booth in front of the AVO, the Strawberry Festival, to learn more about what's going on in Vista. More information about this weekend's events are at thewawaterpark.com and vistasstrawberryfest.com. The American Legion Post 365 is holding a Memorial Day Remembrance Event on Memorial Day, Monday, May 30th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, right here at the Civic Center in the parking lot. The Gloria McClellan Adought Activities Center's Annual Community Yard Sale, hmm, takes place on Saturday, June 4th, that sounds like fun, from 8 till 12 at the center, 1400 Vale Terrace Drive. And to safely dispose of confidential paperwork at the Free Document Shredding Event on Saturday, June 11th, at the Civic Center, from 9 to noon. Electronics will also be accepted, and details are at thecityofvista.com. I think it's just two boxes of shredding that you can do at one time, but the details are there, cityofvista.com. So, with that, I will go down the line, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Rigby for comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because of my voice giving out, I won't go into any detailed report, but since Don is still here, and I know that you work a lot in concert with Jack and Lisa Flaherty in the Celtic Queen Pageant, I wanted to let you know that on Saturday, a former Miss Celtic Queen was crowned Miss California, and she will be competing at the Miss United States Pageant in the summer. So, you can just pass that along, you guys are doing a great job with them.
Here it is, Councilmember Franklin, no, Councilmember Campbell?
Just going to say, I'm going to fly out at 6:00 AM tomorrow to go to Sacramento to meet with state legislators with the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce for the day.
But aren't you glad you didn't fly out tonight? Our Councilmember Aguilera.
So, as I mentioned earlier, I did attend a meeting, I guess technically, we hosted it here at the city with the BIA and developers, and they were speaking to myself and other council members from Oceanside, San Marcos, Carlsbad, and I believe Escondido. And they were talking to us about different ways that we can process applications, help development, and basically, in summary, if we can cut down the time, you know, that it takes for a project to be developed, that's probably the biggest cost-saving even over, you know, we talked a lot about parking and stuff today. But I think, as you heard tonight, the BIA actually was complimenting us on our process, so I thank staff for that, particularly Mr. Conley, in coming up with some good ideas on how we can get some projects passed quickly. So, I think we're doing a good job in comparison to some of the other cities and what I heard, but as always, ways to improve, and I would encourage my fellow council members to work with the BIA or meet with them and some of these developers to get some cost-saving ideas from them, because ultimately, it's our citizens that end up paying those extra costs. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, I just got an email that NCTD's lift may possibly strike, MTS is striking, so NCTD lift has the same workers, so I'm not exactly sure of all the details, but there may be some disruption to service by NCTD lift tomorrow morning.
Okay, City Manager.
One item, that the city offices, as well as the library, will be closed this Monday, May 30th, Memorial Day, and trash collection will be delayed one day next week.
Oh, well, okay. Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Anything, City Attorney? Oh, a City Clerk, anything down there? Okay, we good? I can be adjourned? What time, wait, what time is it?
10:10.
10:10. Wow, I think it's our latest meeting ever. And all the staff is there, you've got to be at work tomorrow early.
This is probably the latest meeting you've had?
I think it is, yes, the latest one I've had.